Well, good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council on the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. Tonight is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if I could, I'd ask our city clerk, if you could please do a roll call.
Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Skellman.
Here. Thank you. And if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, just.
You know, you think after a year we would have that down, but we still don't.
There's special things that you can do in Zoom, I guess, or on other platforms where you can actually hear everybody at the same time. Otherwise, we cut each other's mics off and it just sounds interesting. Okay, so we'll move on to item number four, approval of minutes for our regular meeting on November 24th.
So, Mo.
Second, this is Councilmember Harvey.
And Mayor, before you have a vote, just one thing to add. We noticed after the publication of the agenda and the minutes that under item, this is the minutes, item 11B. This is the professional service agreement for the local road safety plan. That there was council direction to amend the wording of resolution to update from accidents. And so I would just ask about the motion. Includes that we will amend it to reflect the direction given at the meeting and of course also update the resolution before it's signed.
I am okay with that amendment.
And I am okay with that amendment also.
So we have that amendment noted. We have a motion and a second. Lauren, could we please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skellman.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to item number five, which is announcements. We begin with meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules. And we're still looking at the flag, but I think Lauren might know that. Meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council would consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the issue or the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com or by texting your zip code 94931-2888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service. And we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based as well as appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. That will move on to item six, approval of the final agenda. And I understand from our city manager, there may be an adjustment.
Hey Mayor, actually no, no proposed adjustments. It was just amendment to the minutes which you already picked up. Thank you.
Okay, for the previous meeting. Okay, understood. Thank you. Okay, so there's no changes for tonight's agenda. With that, we'll move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the City Council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I will ask our city clerk to check in with our attendees and see if there's any citizens' business or a public comment for consent calendar items.
Thank you, Mayor. And as a reminder to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer or dial star nine if you're just using your telephone. George Beric, go ahead.
Thank you, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Former City Councilman George Beric. I particularly want to speak to John Deloso this evening. I'd like to say, sir, I think you've been a huge disappointment for our town. The town has been and continued in a state of decline with you being appointed to the city council. The downtown specific plan has not advanced one inch under your lack of leadership. You presided over fake budgets over the last few years. Your corny jokes did nothing to advance the discussion at our city council meetings and surely didn't ease any pain of the meetings that we were in, we had to endure. And during the wildfires of 2017 and 2020, you did nothing to invite the fire victims and their families to come to Kattati, find comfort, find resources at all, despite my pleadings for the city to do so. I think you get an F on helping the homeless in Kattati. You never lifted a finger for the homeless in Kattati. Despite the once-a-year holiday food drive that you did, which was pretty pathetic, I think you ignored the real problems of homelessness in Kattati. I give you an F on bringing the political diversity to the city council and any healthy discussions on the matters before us. And when the police chief threatened to arrest me after a city council meeting, when I called Mr. Hancock a liar, I came back to the city council two weeks later and simply asked for an apology and to reprimand the police chief. And you folks, especially you, Mr. Deloso, did nothing. And when I had to sue the city, I even offered to settle the lawsuit for $1. And the city refused, telling me to pound salt. So the city spends $150,000 in legal fees and settlement fees, and you, and that's on your hands as well. And you have been a disgrace as a city leader, and since you can't, you could never bring yourself to refer to me as former City Councilman George Beric. I'm now going to refer to you in the future as Fredo Del Joko. Another corrupt Kattati politician. Thank you.
Mayor Skellman, that ends the public comment.
Okay, so we'll move on to consent counter items eight. And on the consent counter, we've got items A, B, and C.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I moved to approve the consent calendar.
And this is Councilmember Landman. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Lauren, would you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skellman.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That's a, we'll show as a five oh vote. And we'll move on to item number nine, direction on future agenda items. And I will look to see if there are any raised hands or I'll try to look at the video too, since I guess we have two ways of indicating. All right, seeing none, I will move on to item 10, our regular agenda. And with that, for item A, consideration of adoption of the housing affordability agreement, we'll turn it over to Noah House. Go ahead, Noah, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman, members of the council. Lauren, please bring up my presentation and I will request control. The item before the council this evening is the affordability agreements for the Jamie Lane's residential subdivision. Lauren, I might have to ask you to advance the slide. As identified, these are the affordability agreements for the Jamie Lane subdivision, which you will recall is a five-lot residential infill project at the intersection of Ryan Lane and East Kattati Avenue. The project has been approved to subdivide that existing 6.0.6 acre parcel approximately into five separate lots to construct five new single-family homes, which will front onto Ryan Lane. And all five of the homes are proposed to be sold to families with incomes that are below market rates with a maximum income level of moderate or 120% of the median income. Next slide, Lauren. There's a lot of background on this project. It's in the staff report, but I'll just remind the council that came to the planning commission most recently in May 18th of 2020, and they recommended approval of the project to the city council, who then voted on June 9th of this year to approve the project. Next slide. Lauren, if you'll just click slowly through, then I'll identify the five homes. Then one more will identify the locations of the alley-loaded garages. An additional click shows that the project will construct new fences, and then the last shows that they will install an EVA access from East Kattati for emergency vehicles. Next slide, please. These are the elevations as they're proposed to face the street. Kind of simple, but also have craftsman elements and features as directed with porches by the city's design standards and guidelines. Next slide. So getting into the affordability agreement, which is before the council this evening. As mentioned, it does require affordability levels that allow up to moderate income. And that's intended to provide the maximum amount of flexibility. A lot of projects have run into headwinds with regards to financing costs, construction difficulties, and, and so while this is different from the city's inclusionary housing requirements, which would have prescribed a ratio of very low, low and moderate income levels. This has been anticipated to allow up to moderate. The entire time has been proposed through the recent discretionary processes. Some other differences from the inclusionary requirements are that these are deed restricted in perpetuity. So it's not a 30-year term or a 50-year term. It's, it's essentially forever for the life of the buildings. They will be deed restricted. And this agreement also includes a local preference clause. So folks who live in or work in Kattati currently will get first priority to the housing. Then second priority will go to folks who, children attend the Rancho Kattati School District. And then third priority goes to Sonoma State employees. And then fourth will be granted to folks who are county residents at large. It's a little atypical for the city to bring these affordability agreements out of step. Usually they're brought with the, the final map of the subdivision and the public improvement documents. However, as identified in the staff report, there's multiple funding sources, including state funds from the California Department of Housing, I think it's Housing Finance Authority, as well as the County of Sonoma. And all of our regulatory documents have to be in alignment and be essentially blessed by the attorneys ahead of being recorded with those maps and so on the each of the five individual parcels. And so we are bringing this a little bit out ahead of the final map to allow this action to then, these documents to then be sent around to those other agencies so they can true up their legal documents and ensure that we don't have any discrepancies because it is critical, given the layering, so to speak. Final maps are anticipated to come before the council in February at the latest, but I just wanted to highlight that. So next slide, please, Lauren. With that, it's recommended by the community development department that the council review the proposed affordability agreements for the Jamie Lane subdivision and adopt a resolution approving those agreements, delegating final signing authority and any editing that's needed to the city manager. No substantive changes will be made though. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. And I will bring it back to council first, see if there are any questions for staff. Vice Mayor Moore, so you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman. Thank you, Noah, for that presentation. I don't know that this is an appropriate time to bring that up, but you may have to remind me if we had conversations regarding solar applicability on these particular units. If you would be kind enough to indulge me and refresh me on that.
Yes, the, the council did direct staff to require that percentages of these projects. So I think it was half the projects, electricity needs have to be met through solar panels, and they're anticipated to be installed on the garages. And they were all at least pre-plumbed, if not actually wired for electric vehicle charging in the garages as well.
Thank you very much. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Skellman.
You're welcome. And I'll just pause a moment, see if there's any more hands going up. Councilwoman Landman, are you raising your hands on video? Or was that just, no, okay, sorry. I saw movement. I wanted to make sure I wasn't catching everything or wasn't missing anything, I should say. Okay, so I'm not seeing any more hands or indications that people are having questions from the council. So I will open it up to public comment. So Lauren, if you would please check with our attendees.
Thank you, Mayor Skellman. As a reminder, please use your raise hand icon. There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you for checking. So with that, I'll bring it back to council, see if there's any further comments or a motion in making. Councilwoman Landman.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion, but first I just wanted to thank Mr. House for remembering to fold in the residency requirement and figuring that out. Happy to see that. I think that's a good addition. So thank you for that. Thank you, Vice Mayor Moore, for remembering the thing about the solar because that completely is completely, this is why we have five people on these boards. So with that, I would be pleased to move a resolution approving the house affordability agreement for the Jamie Lane five-lot residential subdivision.
This is Councilmember Deloso. Go ahead and second that. Unless someone beat me to it.
Go for it, John.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion in two seconds, but we'll take the one from Councilwoman Deloso. So with that, I'll ask Lauren to take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skellman.
Yes. Okay, that shows a five oh vote. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item B. And for that, we'll turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obit.
Hey Mayor, members of the council. So while we get the presentation loaded, Lauren, you're working on that. I want to, first of all, just mention that we have some people here with us that can, that are also available to answer questions. So we have some people from Recology. Celia Ferber is here with us tonight, as well as Fred Stummler and Nikki Burke. And then William Shown from R3, who, R3 is the company that did the detailed rate review, is here as well. So after the presentations, they're all available for questions.
Mr. Obit, if I may, and Mayor Skellman. I just want to indicate that I have to recuse myself due to having a family member that is employed by Recology. So I will step out and I'll wait for the text to step back in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that reminder. And Lauren, if you could please, I'll remind you to text someone who's able to come back. Thank you.
All right, Lauren, can you advance the slide, please? Okay, so just as way of some background, in 2013, Redwood Empire Disposal, otherwise known as Rado, entered into a 10-year franchise agreement with the city. And the franchise agreement has a lot of provisions in it, but some of the ones that are just more applicable for the discussion tonight are that the city council approves the maximum allowable rate subject. And so period, right? But also there's an allowable annual adjustment that consists of 70% of the CPI index and the landfill tip fee changes. So that's what's otherwise referred to as the annual rate adjustment. That's allowed per the franchise agreement without any further council action. The franchise also has some other provisions that came up. As you all know, we talked about this on November 24th at the council meeting. So see, these are some items that had come up for, for further research and bringing back for discussion. So one was the commercial dry mixed waste program, commercial food compost program in accordance with AB 1826. And then the overall diversion requirements, and these are all franchise provisions, as I mentioned. The commercial dry mixed waste program and the commercial food compost program are are included without, without cost for the, for the customers. Next slide. So in 2015, there were significant rate changes due to, due to the transfer of the landfill ownership. So as you recall, at the time, the county owned and operated the landfill and they transferred that to Republic. That was, that transfer happened in April of 2015, and then in October of 2015, the compost facility closed, which caused all of the compost materials to get diverted from the landfill where they previously had gone to largely out-of-county sites. So the transfer of the landfill resulted in some significant sort of pass-through costs as well as the closure of the compost facility and the trucking out of, out of county resulted in a second increase that same year, significant increase. So Rado, who had been our franchise holler since 2013, as I mentioned earlier, there's the annual allowable CPI increases. Rado hadn't implemented any, any of those adjustments since essentially, well, since they had acquired the franchise. And then in 2016, Rado requested a detailed rate review. R3 reviewed Rado's financials and at that time validated a 25% increases in January of 2017. That, that was not implemented, so there was no change in rates. But that was, there was a discussion about that detailed rate review at that time. But there were operational concerns with how Rado was running the franchise. And so in that meeting, city council directed staff through R3 to conduct a performance review of Rado's operations, which be, which ultimately became the conditions of assignment when Recology was assigned the franchise. So again, this discussion happened in early 2017. By middle to end of 2017, the assignment discussions were underway and the assignment to Recology actually occurred at the very end of the year in 2017. So that's how the, that's how the, the performance review transitioned into conditions of assignment. Just chronologically, it worked out that way. Next slide. And so these are some of the items that were basically assigned to Recology to correct that came out of that review. One was vehicle overloading and sort of not an accurate inventory of the, of the vehicles they were using in Kattati in accordance with the franchise. And the vehicle overloading had more to do with, I think, trying to save on the number of routes that Rado was running. So as a consequence, the vehicles themselves were frequently showing up at the landfill overloaded. So that was an issue that was identified at that time. Standardized carts was an issue that was also identified. So there's a variety of different colors of carts out there in the population that, that were an issue that needed to be dealt with. At the time, the commercial food waste program, this is AB 1826 program. This was not very well implemented at that time. I think, I think the implementation was somewhere around 30% when the performance review happened, if I recall correctly. And then the commercial dry mixed waste program wasn't really running at the time, which was identified under Rado's performance review. And then also, I guess finally, I'll just say that all of the residential and commercial accounts needed to be reviewed to ensure that everyone was being billed accurately. So all these things that came out of that Rado review were basic, as I mentioned, just basically assigned to Recology to correct as they picked up the franchise in the end of 2017. In 2018, Recology then reported to the city, and this wasn't unique to us. This was essentially all of the cities in Sonoma County that Recology provides service to, which is all of them except for Windsor and Town of Sonoma. Was that what we thought we had in terms of diversion, which was reported to us by Rado in 2017 as 42 to 43% diversion at that time, was in fact in 2018 only 32%. So at that time, I believe the diversion requirement in 2017 was like 48%, I believe. And then it went to in 2018 to 50% under the franchise agreement. So anyway, it was a significant step back when the materials were, were accounted for properly. Lauren, next slide. So after operating the franchise for a little more than a year, Recology requested a detailed rate review. And the city contracted again with R3 to conduct the detailed financial analysis of Recology's rate request. And under the franchise, all expenses must be reasonable and permitted. So that's how we got to the proposed rates that were in the packet tonight. And they were found by R3 to be reasonable and permitted, allowable under the franchise agreement. Earlier this year, when we started discussing, bringing the detailed rate review forward for, for discussion, COVID hit, as everyone knows, and Recology agreed to a six-month delay. They originally were intending to implement in July of this year and it was delayed until the end of the year. So that's, that's the discussion tonight. Next slide, Lauren. The last meeting, November 24th, as I mentioned at the outset, city council brought up some questions and issues that they wanted more information about and bring back to council for further discussion. And that was the status of the commercial food waste program. brought up some, uh, questions and issues that they wanted more information about and bring back to council for further discussion. And that was the status of the commercial food waste program, status of the commercial dry mixed waste program and the overall, um, the status of the overall diversion amount, which were the three identified areas in the R3, um, detailed rate review that hadn't yet been fully implemented per the franchise agreement. Um, that, that detailed rate review was from January of 2020. So, um, thus the desire to get more current information on these programs. So the commercial food waste program, um, after, uh, following the meeting, um, staff discussed with, uh, Recology and R3 and, uh, determined that the commercial food waste program is now, um, is now compliant with the franchise agreement. So we have, um, this is in the packet, but we have eighty-two percent, um, commercial participation and seventy-seven percent multifamily. So, um, this, um, this meets the requirements of the franchise agreement and, um, AB eighteen twenty-six tier four, which is the tier we're currently in. Um, the next step is SB thirteen eighty-three, which makes, um, mandatory, uh, commercial food waste program. It moves to a mandatory program rather than a, a, um, what basically is a mandatory for the, for the, um, franchise hauler. So in other words, Recology has to offer it, but people don't have to take it. Um, so the amount of, um, uh, subscriptions that we have in commercial and multifamily, um, appears to be very, uh, very high. So they do seem to be doing a very good job on the commercial food waste program. Um, but like I said, when we move to SB thirteen eighty-three, then it becomes a mandatory program, um, which would have to implement, um, January of 2022. So that's going to be a subject of discussion in, uh, calendar year 2021. Lauren, next slide, please. So the commercial dry mixed waste program, um, it is not fully compliant with the franchise agreement. And, um, in further discussions with Recology and, and R3, um, what we're, um, I think what's being proposed tonight is essentially an equivalent program, um, that you continues to use the compactor waste collection, as well as the construction and demolition debris box program. But, um, in that program, ensuring that there's no cost that, um, bleeds out to the general rate pairs that's contained only for those customers. So their rates in general don't support that program. And, um, I will add, you know, as part of the discussion, this came up in the last council meeting too, that, um, when, uh, Recology tried to pilot the program, they found, uh, the original program as anticipated by the franchise agreement, they found that they got a lot of, um, other kinds of waste that made the recyclables, um, uh, a, a lot of the recyclables not very, um, useful and basically having to be just landfilled. So they, um, they ended up in this, in this program, um, to try to, to try to, um, make the best use of the resource, resources that were available and the best use of the, the waste streams that are coming to the landfill to, um, maximize the benefits. So that's how, um, they ended up in this proposed equivalent program. In terms of diversion, um, so as I mentioned, as of 2018, the diversion requirement and the franchise agreement was fifty percent. Um, in 2018, after, um, reaccounting for how the waste is actually, uh, weighed and sorted and, um, tracked, they found that, um, the actual diversion amount was thirty-two percent in 2018, essentially the first, in the first year that they had assumed the franchise. And then as of, uh, 2022, this year, we're, um, read about forty-two to forty-four percent diversion. So they've climbed back up approximately ten or slightly more percent as of today. Next slide, Lauren. So the next step, um, as I touched on, is SB thirteen eighty-three. So this is the mandatory, um, commercial organics program. This is part of a, a broader, um, piece of state legislation that was really, um, looking to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in a variety of sectors. Um, as it pertains to, um, solid waste, it was really focused on reducing methane emissions and landfills. So how you reduce methane emissions and landfills is you basically divert organic materials out of the landfill and, um, compost them or do something else with them. So, um, SB thirteen eighty-three, as it, the regulations of, um, just recently, earlier this year finalized by CalRecycle. And so, um, the implementation date, the go-live date for the program is January one, twenty twenty-two, which, um, will require the franchise, the franchise hauler, so it requires Recology, um, to purchase new equipment and bring on, um, new personnel and new resources to implement the program prior to January twenty twenty-two. Get ready for it, as well as, um, actually run the program once we get past January of twenty twenty-two. It requires the city next year to develop the ordinances to be able to enforce noncompliance with this program. So this is, um, something we're all kind of doing statewide, where we're gonna have to, um, uh, create a backstop if, uh, if a, if, if any, what they call covered generators, basically anyone that falls into the SB thirteen eighty-three, um, categories, is either, um, not given a waiver for some specific reason, or, um, if they don't have a waiver, then they have to, um, have service. And if they don't, if they refuse, then, um, uh, obviously, the franchise hauler would do everything they could to enroll those people. But at the end of the day, um, all cities, including ours, will need an ordinance to be able to backstop that as necessary. Um, so we need to, um, you know, to be able to implement that, there's going to be, um, various tasks, both on Recology's side and the city's side. Um, I'm sure also, um, Zero Waste Sonoma will have some sort of broader rules in that implementation as well. So there's a lot of moving pieces that, um, need to be nailed down. And that's, um, certainly going to be the subject of, um, future, um, a future discussion in 2021 to try to, um, make sure that we're clear on who's doing what part of the implementation of thirteen eighty-three. And, um, uh, to that, um, Recology has also offered to, um, start up the program and run it for the initial year. So for calendar year 2022, um, at no cost to the Katari rate pairs. So that is, um, some new information that we didn't discuss last time, but something that has come up in discussions, um, with Recology since then. So, um, next slide, please, Lauren. And then, um, we talked about this last meeting, so I'll go over this fairly quickly, but just a re- reminder to everyone, maybe that wasn't at the meeting last week. Katari's rate structure is designed to encourage recycling and composting. It's, and it's designed, um, and how it's designed to do that is it has, um, Katari has lower costs for a twenty and thirty-two gallon residential garbage cans. As, um, I think everyone realizes, when you get garbage, you also get compost and recycling. So you've got a green and blue bin. But, um, the rate is based on the size of your grave and your garbage bin. So, um, so the, the, uh, goal has always been to lower the, lower the cost of a smaller garbage bin to get people, um, out of larger garbage bins and get them into smaller garbage bins, um, and hopefully increase the amount of composting and, um, recycling diversion that they, um, participate in. Um, just by sending that cost signal to customers. Um, so the same, that same, um, paradigm exists on the commercial side. So, um, on the commercial side, all the bins under the six-yard bin, um, which is the, the largest bin, um, are, um, are lower cost than, then you'll see, um, across the county as an average. So, um, so really looking at the commercial and residential segments to try to get the, to try to encourage people to downsize their garbage bins and move, um, get better about moving recyclables into recyclable containers and compostable materials into organics. Also, um, I will just point out again that, um, for people that qualify for the CARES, the PG&E CARES program, um, they are, they are automatically eligible for a twenty percent discount, um, for garbage rates as well. And, um, CARES, uh, CARES is basically income qualified, but, uh, people can also qualify for CARES through, um, proof of enrollment and a variety of, um, public assistance programs. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the, on the residential side, this is the, um, the can distribution of, um, our residential customers. So fourteen percent of the customers are in the twenty can, twenty gallon size, which is the smallest. Um, fifty-eight percent are in the thirty-two gallon size, which is the next size up. So we have seventy-two percent of our residential customers in the twenty or thirty-two gallon cans, which is, um, I guess you could say that the, um, um, the goal with respect to moving people into smaller can sizes has worked, um. You know, and hopefully that's, uh, benefiting us in our diversion numbers at the end of the day. Um, twenty-three percent are in sixty-four gallon and then, um, a very small amount, five percent are in ninety-six gallon cans. Next slide. So this table just recaps, um, what we're talking about tonight. So the, um, farthest left column, um, is the can sizes. The top part of it is residential service. Um, the bottom half is commercial service. So with respect to residential, you see the Katari's, um, current rates there by can size. And then the next column over is the proposed, um, uh, the proposed rates for those can sizes. And then the next column to the right of that is the, uh, average for Sonoma County. And then the difference, um, from the average. So again, um, as I mentioned previously, for the twenty and thirty-two gallon cans, um, our cans are, um, less than average, um, for what's for average in the county, at least based on rates today. Um, what's proposed and then what the rates are today. And then, um, the sixty-four and ninety-six gallon cans are more expensive. On the commercial side, um, especially with the debris bins there at the bottom, um, the same holds true with the, with the cans, the, um, rolling cans as well. Except the commercial doesn't have a twenty gallon size. It only has a thirty-two gallon size. But you can see that the commercial thirty-two gallon is less expensive than the countywide average, um, eh, with the proposed amount. And then more expensive for sixty-four and ninety-six gallon sizes. The debris bins, um, same idea. So one and a half yards, all the way up to four yards are, are, um, less expensive than what you'll see as an average in the county, um, but more expensive at the six-yard size, the largest size. Lauren, next slide. Okay, so just a quick, um, you know, who doesn't love a good bar chart? So, um, just a quick bar chart of, uh, of current rates. And, um, just a little bit of, um, orientation here first. These are monthly, um, costs. The green bars Katari's proposed rate. Um, the blue bars are Sonoma County cities. The, um, orange bars are some, um, like Northern Marin and, well, Point Arena isn't Marin, but some, some other franchises that, um, Recology serves. Central Marin is significantly different than these rates, but, um, these are Recology's North, Northern Marin Service territory. So, um, this year, um, in addition to Katari having a detailed rate review, Healdsburg also went through a detailed rate review, um, run up, went through one. Luma is on the same schedule we're on. Um, Santa Rosa went through a new contract. Actually, they implemented a whole new contract in twenty eighteen. Um, Windsor just updated their contract and, um, and Cloverdale. And so the only, uh, remaining ones in the county, um, that need to have a detailed rate review are Cloverdale and Spastel. But everyone else has either had it and implemented the rates, or they are in the process of doing it now. Um, this is the twenty gallon size, by the way. I'll just, I'll just point that out. Uh, next slide, please. And then a thirty-two gallon size. So, um, same thing, some, um, you can just see where Katari is there in the green on the far left and then, um, everyone else in Sonoma County in the blue. And then some of the Northern Marin, um, jurisdictions that take Recology service in the, um, in the orange. So, um, next slide, please. All right, so, um, if there's any immediate questions from my slides, I'd be happy to answer them. We also have, um, Recology's also going to do a slight, a slide presentation and they're gonna, they're gonna be, uh, next. So I would, um, if there's no immediate questions with my slides, we'll just go ahead and load up Recology's and they'll run through their slides. And then, of course, we'll all be available for any questions.
I'm not seeing raised and icons from city council members about questions for your part of the presentation.
Okay. And I believe, uh, Celia Ferber will be giving this, this presentation for Recology.
Thank you very much, Damian. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Head nodding. Great, thank you. Um, so again, my name is Celia Ferber and I'm the Waste Zero Manager for Recology Sonoma Marin. Uh, thank you Mayor Wendy Skilman and council members for allowing me the opportunity to give you some brief highlights, um, about our company this evening, as well as some highlights about our, our commitment to diversion in Katari, landfill diversion. Next slide, please. Or do I have? Oh, thank you. Alrighty, so, um, we started servicing the city of Katari on December twenty-third of two thousand seventeen. Uh, we viewed it as a, a Christmas gift at the time. We were so, so excited to be servicing, uh, to be an operation in the North Bay. And it's been, uh, just, just close to three years here now. And so we provide recycle, compost, garbage, construction demolition, street sweeping and recycled processing services to Katari, uh, to both commercial and residential customers. And, uh, we are also a one hundred percent employee-owned company. And we are the largest employee-owned company in the waste industry. And so, uh, what that means is that employees at every level own a piece of the company. Uh, and we all take great pride in our work. Since we don't answer to outside shareholders, we're able to factor in the environment into every decision made. Uh, and this allows us to better serve the communities that we live and work in. Uh, so we, uh, we also have four hundred and seventy employees employed by Recology Sonoma Marin. And eighty-seven percent of us, uh, live within the communities that we serve. I'm actually an, an example of that. I, I'm a homeowner here in Katari. Uh, and so it's, it's great that we're able to, to live and work in the communities that we serve. Uh, we're also proud members of Teamsters Union six-six-five. And all of our employees have full benefits, retirement plans, safety equipment and procedures and living wages that allow us to, to live here in this great. Next slide, please. So here we are. This is, uh, just one of our volunteer days. Uh, we like to do these once or twice a year in our communities. It's really important to us to give back. Uh, it's not uncommon that we get over two hundred employee owners and family members that come to uh, these events where we oftentimes beautify a park or a community center or a school. And so this was one that we were able to do, uh, uh, in two thousand seventeen, actually, December two thousand seventeen. And so we love doing these and we look forward to being able to do them again soon, uh, once we get past this pandemic. And the next slide, please. So we are very committed to landfill diversion. Our mission is to find the best and highest use of all resources collected. And this before and after picture here really embodies what we try to achieve with all of our customers. Um, as you can see in this before picture, the customer, the commercial customer had a a large garbage dumpster bin and then just a cart for their compost and recycle containers. And then we had a waste zero specialist come and work with this account and transition them over to a dumpster bin for their compost, dumpster bin for their recyclables, and then just a cart for their garbage. And so, uh, in this scenario, uh, if we were to apply the Katari rates that we're proposing, this before picture would be three hundred and fifty-five dollars per month. And this after picture would be one hundred and one dollars per month. So this is a big win for the environment and also it's a big win financially for the customer. And so we, we strive to achieve this across the board for both of our commercial customers as well as our residential customers. Next slide, please. And so we have a lot of tools that help us to implement successful programs. Uh, here we have some examples of our posters, our labels, our newsletters that we mail out to all of our customers in the spring and the fall. We have a, you know, custom Katari newsletter, it's four pages that we do in the spring and the fall every year. Uh, and also we have a recycle label that we worked with city staff on. Uh, and you'll see it on city cans downtown, uh, just encourage people's finger cycle, uh, in public spaces and goes over what can go in those, those containers. So they can recycle correctly. Next slide, please. We also have physical tools that help us to implement these programs. And we're not contractually required to provide these tools. And we're not contractually required to provide these tools, but we find that they're really helpful in getting the programs up and running successfully. So we provide compost kitchen pills to residents upon request. And we provide recycle buddy bags to multifamily dwelling residents. This helps them to take their recyclables from their their apartment unit to the the bins that might be located in enclosure outside. And we also have twenty-three gallon, blue and green indoor containers for commercial customers. So they have, it's just a really easy way for them to set up their compost and recycle programs and then they can they can empty those indoor containers into their their outdoor bins outside. Next slide, please. So here, shown in the first picture, this is Waste Zero Specialist Cherie Sealy, who is devoted to the city of Katari. And she is doing an educational presentation for Camp Katari kids. This was last year because it was in person. But she just loves working with the kids and and doing these educational presentations. And it's it's great when you can really get that message across to the kids because they they do take that home and that's how we kind of see this cultural shift towards towards landfill diversion, reducing, reusing. So she's transitioned, she's pivoted this year to numerous online virtual presentations. She did one with the library. That's there's a flyer here for that as well. And she's active in Katari. You'll see her around town all the time, working with the commercial customers. Next slide, please. Here we are in La Plaza Park. This was this was an event last year and back when, again, when we had in-person events. But we often, you know, we would host an educational table at the accordion festival or the music festival. Or we should say, and music festival, the Oktoberfest shop and stroll. I would try and get our our table up at all of them, but also like to also like to signs on the recycle compost and garbage carts at the event so that it's really clear to attendees what goes where. And that's also another avenue to reach people who maybe don't read, you know, the newsletter that we send out, but maybe they'll see these signs at an event and and that might kind of trigger like, oh, I I can compost my food scraps at home. So that's that's a good way to reach people and we look forward to in-person events in the future. Next slide, please. So at this point in time, we have eighty commercial compost programs in place in Katari. And we're really proud of that figure. We have virtually all restaurants in the city now set up with a compost program. So every single restaurant, every single part of the city has a compost program in place, which which was quite a feat. And this allowed us to to bring our compliance with AB eighteen twenty-six up quite a bit. So when we came in to operation compliance with that state law that mandates compost service was just at thirty percent. And today it's at ninety percent. And you might notice that actually differs slightly from the figure that Damian presented. What I am presenting right now is tier three of AB eighteen twenty-six. And as of September of this year, Cal Recycle changed the the threshold and moved us into tier four of AB eighteen twenty-six. So it just started in September. And so that's that's why he he had that eighty-two percent compliance number. But for for tier three, which we just came out of, it's ninety percent compliance. And, you know, we're we're constantly working to achieve one hundred percent of compliance. Next. Oh, you know what? Actually, I I did want to mention something. I'm sorry, could you go back one slide? I wanted to. Thank you. I wanted to touch on the costs for our commercial compost program. This was something that came up in discussion on the November twenty-fourth meeting. And so the we rely on the tip fees from the transfer station, the Sonoma County transfer stations to cover the expense of the commercial compost program. And so from our fiscal year, fiscal year twenty, which was October two thousand nineteen through September of twenty twenty this year. The tip fee revenue that came in to cover was twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the cost to run that program was one hundred and five dollars and sorry, one hundred and five thousand dollars and seven and one hundred and five thousand seven hundred forty-nine. Thank you. And so that so that was a deficit of eighty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars to run that program. So I know that was a question that came up at the last meeting and I just wanted to to let you know those costs and basically the tip fee revenues do not cover the the cost of the program, but we've we've still rolled it out en masse despite that.
Thank you. And Celia, I'll tell you too, that that's in packet page ninety-nine is a table that has all those costs if anyone's looking for that.
Thank you, Damian.
Yeah.
Next slide, please. And so the dry commercial mixed waste program that was mentioned, this was also a matter of discussion at the last meeting. We piloted this program in two thousand nineteen, which means that we we sorted through, we we collected commercial garbage loads and we sorted through them at the transfer, the central transfer station. And the the recoverable material in those loads was very minimal. It it did not, it was not worth the labor to sort it all out because what we were getting out of those loads was was pretty much nothing. Which actually speaks to the success of our recycle programs. That means that those commercial customers are using their recycle bins and they're putting all their recyclables in the recycle bin instead of their garbage bin. So we found that what we did have success with was the Lowe's compactor. So compact commercial, large commercial customers that have garbage compactors. We found some success with sorting through that material. We found more recoverable recyclables in those loads. So the Lowe's garbage compactor is still going to the central transfer station to be sorted. Next slide, please. And so just to touch on our landfill diversion, like Damian mentioned, in our first quarter in operation in Q one of two thousand eighteen, our diversion rate was at thirty-two point five percent. You know, not meeting the the goals outlined in the franchise agreement. And these are, this was our first quarter in operation. We we basically inherited that diversion rate. And in in this year, in Q two of two thousand twenty, we were able to raise that landfill diversion rate to forty-four percent. And in Q three of this year, it it went to forty-two percent. So we're we're right there between forty-two and forty-four percent at this point in time. And we do recognize that it's it's not quite at, you know, what the where the franchise agreement would like for us to be, but I I'd like to highlight just how far we've come in in a little less than three years and how it really indicates a continued upward trajectory. As well with the with SB thirteen eighty-three coming and you know that that's going to be a mandatory compost service for every single commercial customer. That will help the diversion rate to continue to go up. And we'll continue to work with residents to encourage them to put their food scraps in their green cart at home. There's that's that's still a program that we're educating people about. They're not as familiar with it. So we really want to encourage that and that'll as as more households become used to that, that'll further increase the diversion rate. Another aspect of SB thirteen eighty-three is it requires contamination monitoring. And so as we develop that program further, we think we'll get cleaner material, which will also further help our diversion rate. Next slide, please. And so we've done some equipment upgrades in our our time here. We we found out when we first started up our operations that we had purchased trucks from the prior company that were not compliant with California air quality standards. They, some of the trucks had the diesel particulate filter just completely removed and that's how they were able to run. And so so there was nothing blocking, you know, the diesel particulate filter was removed. So you know, that's that's obviously not compliant with with the air quality standards and we needed to replace those trucks. And so we purchased four brand new biofuel collection trucks and street sweepers that service Katari. So there's and and we also, one of the, one of the stipulations in the assignment required us to make sure that all of the carts across the city were the standardized colors. So we've replaced any carts that were of a different color, you know, than the green, blue, gray, to make sure that everyone has the the standardized colors across the board. Next slide, please. And so this is my last slide and I I want to say that we we're just really proud to be an essential service provider. We've been through the we've been through a lot with this community since we've been in operation between the two thousand nineteen West County floods, the two thousand nineteen Kincaid fire, numerous power safety shut off events. I, you know, I live in Katari and my power was off for four days last year. Like most of you here tonight. So and the pandemic that we currently find ourselves in, as well as the the most recent round of Sonoma County fires that we all just experienced a couple of months ago. We've we've really been through a lot and we've we've provided uninterrupted service through all of it. Which we're really proud in order to be able to do that for the community, to support the community in that way. And I I do want to note that in the beginning months of the pandemic, some some haulers said, oh, you know what? We need to pause our recycle programs. We we just can't do that right now. We can't deal with the pandemic and recycle. And it was actually a fair amount of haulers that that did pause their their recycle programs and we did not pause our recycle program at any point. We've continued to provide that recycle, that critical recycle service because that's what we believe in and that's who we are. And so with that, I if you could take me to the last slide, which just says, thank you. Thank you so much. And I'm I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
And we'll bring it back to council, see if there are any questions. Looking for the raised hand icon. So see. Councilmember Harvey, you see the question? Go ahead, please.
I have a couple of questions. Celia, thank you so much and thank you for the Recology group of speaking with me to answer a lot of questions the other day. You talked about the the commercial food waste and how you're collecting some twenty-four thousand dollars in fees. But it costs a hundred and five thousand and so you're losing eighty-one thousand. What is really driving that? And what is it about the fees that aren't covering that? So that's my first question. My second question is, you talk about the diversion and yes, we've gone from thirty-two percent up to whether you want to call it forty-two or forty-four percent. That's, as you said, it's been three years and given the franchise agreement, in three years, we were supposed to be at fifty percent. We are still not there and yes, we're increasing, but we're out of compliant with the agreement and I didn't hear anything in the presentation about what's the plan to get us there because the agreement said in three years, we'd be at fifty percent. We started all over with you again and given you an extra three years and we're still not there. So I'd like to hear what the plan is for that. And lastly, you talked about the replacement of vehicles. I understand, you know, that the vehicles were not streetworthy and weren't in compliance. And you purchased four vehicles. What is the difference between what the expectation of the vehicle replacement when you garnered the contract and what you actually had to replace? So I imagine I remembering that there was an expectation of replacing certain vehicles at certain periods of time. So how many of those were expected? And how many of those were absolutely unexpected? So those are kind of my three questions for right now. And thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. And so the first question, waiting just a further explanation on on that eighty-one thousand dollar deficit. And so basically, the the transfer station tip fee revenues. You know, initially, this commercial food waste program, when we first came into operation, it was one one food waste truck for the entire county. And we've since quadrupled that to to four routes. And so we've we've quadrupled the amount of commercial composts that we're providing. And worse yet, we're still being compensated at that same rate as if we only had one truck. So we've really grown this program exponentially, but the revenues coming in to compensate for that haven't grown at all.
But isn't it per ton? So even if you quadrupled it, because it's by ton, you would get more by the tons you're bringing in. So what what am I missing?
I might ask if Nikki might be able to explain this better than I can, but it's my understanding that the tons coming into Nikki, would you maybe be able to explain that?
I I'd be happy to address that question. So the way that the per ton fee is set up, it's it's on all incoming tons. So the trash and the food waste, we get a four dollar per ton tip fee. So as you as you move tonnage to food waste, you're not increasing your tip fee because you, in many, in some of the cases, I'd say in in you know, certainly at least fifty percent of the case, you are taking that material from the MSW stream and moving it into the food waste stream. So there is really no increase in the tip fee to cover the increase in the food waste you bring in. It it has, it increases only by the CPI increase defined in the contract, which has generally been about one percent, one to two percent.
Yeah, I'm this Fred Semler from Recology. I'll add in one other layer to this is the food waste, when it's pulled out of the MSW, instead of it going across the freeway and deposited in central landfill, that that truck actually gets routed all the way to Richmond to the food processing facility there because Sonoma County doesn't have a food processing location in county. So the costs of actually running this route are exponentially higher than than the tons that would have otherwise just moved over to central landfill. So as we expand the program, we're essentially flat in the revenue structure as described and our our route expenses are have grown exponentially.
So is it fair to say, and I won't get the numbers right because I don't have the numbers. Nikki said that it's like four dollars a ton. So is it fair to say that, let's just say for garbage, it's a hundred dollars a ton? But now you're moving it to food waste and that's only four dollars per ton. So it's there's not enough there to cover what's really happening with it?
No, that that four dollars a ton is what was designed into the MOA to pay to cover food waste. It was a, it was a premium put on the tip fee for both garbage and food waste. It it's so the hundred and forty-five dollars per ton that we pay, that you pay and that all of the franchises pay to dispose of material at the landfill, that includes a four dollar, currently around four dollar charge that is supposed to be paying for the food waste program.
So the food waste is not being measured and by ton, you're getting a certain amount for it. It's a side fee based upon the garbage, which if there's less garbage, then you're not getting that fee because the tons got moved over.
You are getting the fee because the food waste also gets that fee, but the fee doesn't go up because you move the move the tons from garbage to food waste. The fee stays basically the same.
So the food waste gets charged at a hundred and forty-five dollars per ton at the gate?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
But it costs more than a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton to get rid of it? Is that?
So that's not, we're not referencing how much the disposal, we're referencing the cost to collect it and get it to the disposal facility. So the the cost to dispose is something that Republic charges at their facility and then they pay how much it costs them to dispose of it. I I don't know.
Okay. All right. I'm still a little confused on that one, but okay.
And would you like us to continue on to your second and third question?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second question was about how we will improve the diversion rate to meet the, the goals outlined in the franchise agreement and ultimately exceed those goals. And I think our best avenue for doing that in the near future is through SB 1383. Because we will be rolling out an additional 70 commercial compost programs. So we'll, we'll see a sizable amount of diversion just through that. And then it also will have to implement certain contamination auditing procedures through SB 1383. So that'll help us to get cleaner material, which will also improve the diversion rate. And then, of course, it's just, it's continuing on with the education and outreach like we've been doing and, and that'll yield and, and you know, further increase just as it has over three years.
But doesn't SB 1383 also have even higher diversion rates? So? Is that not correct? I thought it had higher.
The objective of SB 1383 is to get food waste out of the landfill.
Correct.
So it, it mandates 50% of food waste out of the landfill by 2020, which is the year we're in, but they didn't the regs until, the regulations until just a month ago. And then by 2025, it, it mandates that we get to 75% removal of food waste out of the landfill. So it's not really touching on overall diversion rates. It's touching on getting the food waste out of the landfill.
Right. So what I'm hearing you say is you're saying that the food is the majority of what's driving what's not being diverted. And I don't know that we know that for a fact.
It's most, every commercial customer has a recycle program in place and, and there is still room for improvement. We still find commercial customers that maybe only have one day a week service on their recycle bin. And you have a larger bin, or maybe they need to go three days a week. So there, there is still some, some recyclables to recover. But commercial compost programs are still, those still need to be rolled out en masse, which will be done per SB 1383. As well, residents, you know, they've been recycling for decades, but putting food waste in their green cart is still relatively new. And it's, it's not the cultural norm at this point. We promote it in every newsletter. We have ads on the sides of our trucks. We put it on billboards. We put it in ads in the Community Voice and the Press Democrat. So we do see progress every year, but it's, it's still, we still need a cultural shift where households are putting that material in the green cart.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm looking for is to what's the plan to increase that? Because I agree with you that that's probably from a residential perspective, where you're going to get even more of your movement, even from 32 gallon cans down to 20 gallon cans. Because people have a lot of food waste in their stream, in a residential. We focus on commercial a lot, but I think in order to really move that needle, we need to focus on residents a little bit more.
If I, if I may join this discussion too, this is Fred Semler. Is I, we are experiencing, as Damian had noted in his comments, is we've gone through a similar process as we're addressing tonight in many other communities throughout the area and, and outside of Sonoma County in, in my years prior with Recology. It is, while this is uncomfortable, what we're doing tonight, this is actually part of the process as well. Where, you know, if you look at the slide example that Celia provided in the deck, that is not a fictitious customer example where they went from two yards of waste and 96 gallons recycle and garbage. And with effort, attention and dedication, you can flip that and you can actually create a super majority of diverted material. And, and a rate structure such as what is proposed tonight is, 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 you know, for some people like myself, with a finance accounting background, you know, a monetary, I, I have a very keen monetary lens, finance lens. And so when I look at the options and say, it's going to cost me four times to run a two yard container as it is a 96. And it's going to take me training my employees and getting the buy-in in order to create that, that high diversion account. I'm, I'm monetarily incentivized to move materials out. So while food waste is kind of the low hanging fruit, this process is also a, a very effective and proven methodology to getting people to, to downsize, not only at residential, but also commercial.
And I think that's my point. My point is, is I think we have a bigger opportunity in the residential area to encourage people to move in that direction if we worked with them. Because I think it was pointed out in Damian's presentation, there's 58% of the people with 32 gallon cans that may not need that big a can. If, let's just say even a third of what they have in there is food waste. So I, that's my point.
It, it's a great point. And, and we're in no way, shape or form going to be done after tonight. You know, we're, we're actually expanding the Waste Zero Department, expanding our efforts on our outreach and communication. So we're going to hit it just as hard and harder to, to get the message out there and keep driving material out of the waste stream. That's, that's why our, our company is Waste Zero.
Okay. Thank you.
And Fred, did you want to touch on the, the trucks question?
So you're, I apologize. Could you repeat? I, I think you were concerned about the four trucks being replaced, but I want to make sure I address it exactly.
I understand that four trucks had to be replaced because they were not worthy of being on the road. And we had to replace them. And I do remember when Recology first took over, there was a whole list of vehicles. And I know that there was some expectation that X number were going to have to be replaced over a certain period of time. My question is, is were any of these four to be expected to be replaced? Or were they all a surprise that they all had to be replaced because you thought none were going to have to be replaced in Catati? I'm just trying to get a, you know, where are we at on that spectrum?
Um, I, I wish I could give you specifically to Catati, but the asset lists that were provided were, were inconsistently documented. The record keeping was one of the findings that, that wasn't ideal. Like, I can tell you that we've replaced over 100 vehicles entity wide at Recology Sonoma Marin. And I have 30 assets scheduled to be replaced across all the districts over the next four years for what's called the California Air Resources Board compliance. So we certainly knew that the vehicles were aging and, and were going to be cut off. Carb was, was essentially known at the time of the acquisition. And, and we also knew that, that the rates were not in line. And I believe the Rado Group also did with evidence of their detailed rate review submission prior to the sale as well. So it was known, but, but to the exact extent and to say, you know, assets X, Y, and Z were specifically tagged to be replaced and repurchased. I, I can't give you that answer, unfortunately.
Okay. Cause my recollection, when you guys came before us, when we first took it over, was actually Catati was in pretty good shape. Because the vehicles that we had, I think we had at least one, if not two newer vehicles. And they said, actually, that's really pretty good. So that's my, why my surprise that all of a sudden four needed to be replaced. Because when you first came and, and we had the list and we kind of went through all of that, we were told that actually the vehicles assigned to us were in pretty good shape. So that's why I'm, I'm asking that question.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with the, with the commitments that were made before, as far as that. There were some, there were some assets that, that were in good condition, that were relatively new. But on the general trend is, you know, trucks, trucks really stopped being replaced en masse. You know, in, in the early to mid 2000s.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And looking to see if there are any other questions from the council. Not seeing any raised hands. So Lauren, if you could please check in with the attendees for us. See if there's any public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kilman. George Ferris, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add that, you know, we citizens have been through a lot with Rado and Recology as well. And I think we need a cultural shift to hold these monopolies accountable. So now what do I mean by that? I think the problem is, is that you're not doing detailed rate reviews. Let me explain. Some five years ago, Rado got up during a rate review and complained or reported to us that they were experiencing massive increases in fuel costs for their trucks. I got up and explained that in time, fuel prices were going to come down and whether Rado and Recology was going to be adjusting their rates and their rate studies to pass those cost savings back over to the ratepayers. I reminded you a few, couple of years ago, again, that that issue needed to be addressed and I was met with silence. I believe that Recology has been pocketing the cost savings from the fuel savings that they've been experiencing the last few years. Back when they asked for a, a large rate increase because of fuel costs, fuel was, was topping up towards $4 a gallon. And now look where the fuel, fuel is at. I think the gasoline savings diversion has been going to the bottom line of Recology, and I think that's wrong. And I don't think Catati has really been, I mean, Susan's been doing what she can, but this issue about fuel, I'm going to play the devil's advocate. I believe that we're not holding Recology's feet to the fire on this. I think the ratepayers are getting ripped off on this. I think people's short memories of going back that far should be brushed up a little bit. Because I've been vocal about it. And I expect these rate reviews to, to have a concert, a comprehensive discussion about these fuel prices. Because when there's fuel savings, that goes into the bottom line of Recology. Thank you.
I wanted to inject a little bit of positivity here. First, at the last council meeting, I was so lost in the presentation that I've sent an email to Damian Obed, who replied to it the day after Thanksgiving, which I did not expect. And his reply was clear and it helped me understand. So publicly, I want to thank you, Damian, for doing that. I also want to thank our, our city council for its diligence in reviewing all of the information on our behalf and not just accepting. I don't know what the word is. I'm, and I'm losing it. But for questioning and for thinking through. And finally, I want to thank Recology for reaching out to young people. Last year, my youngest grandchild was taking an AP class in ecology at Annaly. And she needed to do a significant paper on an area of recycling. And we went, I took her to get a firsthand look at the waste management, I don't know if that's the right name, facility that's between Nevada and Petaluma. And we were met by an employee. We were driven around in a truck to all of the areas. We both learned a tremendous amount about what is happening with our waste in terms of recycling and cutting down on the CO2 component. So those, those are all pluses. Now, I know. I need to call you.
All you got.
Get small, small, because I live alone. But I am OCD about recycling and about composting. And I am so glad that you are handling that. So thanks to all.
Mayor's going, that's the end of public comment.
And I see Laura Sparks, you've got your hand up. And since you're technically still a member of the public, we'll let you go ahead and public comment. So why don't you go ahead and make your comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of residential customers are probably not aware that this rate hike is going to happen because people don't read things very often. So I'm wondering if there's some way to help make this a little easier to swallow? If we could do some sort of grace period so that residents who find that they're going to be charged a higher rate could opt into a smaller bin as like a one-time forgiveness type of deal? Perhaps, you know, I'm just, just an idea, like if they opted into a smaller bin by March, then they wouldn't experience the rate increase or something like that. Perhaps one of my colleagues, since I'm just a public member, could ask the Recology people that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And it looks like that is it for public comments. So I'll bring it back to council for any follow-up comments. Not seeing any hands going up. So are we ready to close discussion or are there any further questions from? Councilmember Lam, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kilman. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would like to give my appreciation. This seems to be a night for peace. But I do feel I would like to share some for both the staff from Recology, R3, and certainly everybody at City. Now, when this was brought before us, just at the last meeting, we had a long and in-depth discussion that went back forth on costs and contractual obligations and a lot of rather deep digging. And with that, the response from everybody was very positive to try and deal with these concerns in an incredibly short amount of time. During the holiday season, and need I mention, in the middle of a pandemic too, you've managed to come back and respond to those. And I just say that I'm happy with the work that went into fine tuning this. I'm satisfied with the proposal as it currently stands. I believe it squares up for me, some of the concerns that I brought forward last time, and I'm supportive of that. So I recognize that as a council member, my job is to look for equity for the people of Catati. But I also recognize I have to look at equity for the people I'm dealing with. And in this case, that has to be Recology. Recology certainly left dollars on the table numerous times in this community by withholding rate increases in recognition of some things that have been going on specifically in the last year. And I, I think I keep that in mind. I also keep in mind some of the surprises I'm sure were found in rolling stock. And I think with all these things, as we are going to be working together, it appears for some years, I think this is a good way to move forward and I will be supporting this tonight. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And actually, you just reminded me too, I wanted to express appreciation for the six month delay that Recology put forth to help people during the COVID crisis. Because it's just been incredible how hard people have been hit. So I really appreciate you taking that into account as well and delaying these rate increases for six months. And I see Councilmember DeLasso, you've got your hand up. So go ahead, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I really appreciate Laura's comments about, you know, the possibility of kind of defraying the, the pain. It's always, there's a pain in that wallet and that's usually where we will get change. You know, back in the You know, back in the 90s, we worked through the Environmental Advisory Commission in Katati on what was AB 939, which was to reduce the volume of waste going to the landfill. We were highly successful countywide and statewide in getting that work done. But part of the reason we did that too was the, we introduced a, through the council, a tiered rate cost for large garbage cans. So the larger the can, the more you paid, kind of the same concept we've seen today. So I really do appreciate that comment. And however, here comes the other side of my argument in a sense. I feel that R3 has put a significant amount of time in really trying to ground truth the costs. I mean, they went in and found costs that were submitted on a larger, larger scale by ecology that, you know, that cost is not appropriate, that cost is not appropriate, this cost is. So and I really do appreciate the time that staff in ecology did go back after our last meeting and looked at some of the harder issues that were brought up by some of my colleagues. And I really do appreciate that. So yeah, I think I'm along the same lines as Councilmember Lamond tonight where even though I was ready to move forward on approving R3's recommendation at our last meeting, I am still in that same vein. But thank you all for all those comments. I appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. And Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Do you have any further comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question first to ecology. I also like the suggestion of giving people the opportunity of switching. And I'm curious as to if someone were to call, what is that process and how long would that take? So would they have to be stuck with that for a very long time? Or is it a, okay, well, you have, you know, this size this month, but we can get the next size next month? So if someone from ecology could answer that, that would be awesome?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. This is Fred Stemler. So we will honor the, any customers that call in and ask the downsides. We'll honor the decrease in service immediately. If we can't get the can out, we understand that it's a time, it's a short time constraint here. We're absolutely going to partner with city staff and any other, you know, partners that we identify to get the message out there immediately if this moves forward tonight. So we've been doing this throughout COVID, throughout the entire process. We waived sending folks to collections. We worked on payment plans. We're not trying to create hardship, an unreasonable hardship in any way, shape or form for the customers. So you have my assurance. We will work, we will work with every single customer to make sure that, you know, there's a reasonable transition. If we can't get the carts to them, they're not going to pay the higher rate just because we can't get the carts the same day.
That's great news. And, you know, I'm hoping that the people that get the phone calls, I know we'll get phone calls, you know, as you said, you'll probably get phone calls, that that's kind of the, one of the messages that we give people is there is an opportunity for you and that opportunity is, you know, if you look at what you're doing and compost more, recycle more, you know, might you be able to, you know, change what you do and your behavior to get into a smaller can? You know, that that's kind of the message that we kind of give, both from our side as well as from your side. I think that in our conversation, that that was the direction you guys were headed.
100%.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. So my comments are, this has been like extremely painful for me. I mean, when I look at that number and I look at how much it is and I look at what's going on in the world and everything, it really pains me to look at an increase of any way, shape or form. And certainly one of this size pains me even more. But as I said, I spent time with the folks from ecology that answered a lot of my questions. Damian answered a lot of my questions. The staff from R3 was very helpful in that. And as Damian pointed out in his presentation, you know, I only had what my memory was on things, but my recollection was that we really hadn't increased these rates in a while. That was kind of my recollection other than the specific ones around when there was change of ownership with the landfill and all that. So I really appreciate Damian putting that in there. The reality is that the holler that we had before was not doing things in a manner in which they should have. They were, as was pointed out, you know, not really great to their employees, not meeting really our franchise agreement very well. And they were doing what they could to, you know, make money. So here we are with no increases really since the contract has been in in 2013. And at some point, you kind of get what you pay for. And we have not been paying for very good service. And in order to have good service and to have good employees and to be doing the things that we're supposed to be doing, there is a cost associated with that. So if I look back, you know, from a seven years into a contract and say, well, gee, we haven't really increased it, but we're really asking to increase, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but $6 on a 20-gallon can, that's not as horrible as just looking at it from a 56% increase. So even though it felt really horrible and I think it's the right thing to do, we really need to get this thing righted. What ecology took over was bad, was worse than all of us had even imagined. And when they started peeling back that onion, the onion was kind of rotten in the middle. And I really think that we have to write this. It's a service that we're paying for, but we have to pay for a good service, not a horrible service. So with that, I appreciate everyone's time. And I can, at this point, feel better about supporting this. And as I spoke with Fred and company the other day, my expectation is that we will keep going with the diversion and that we will look to work together successfully to implement the next set of bills and that we won't be seeing increases like this because this is not a really good place to be, you know, jumping things up so dramatically. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Delauso, I see your hand is back up. Did you have further comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Skilman. There were a couple of points I never flipped my page, I'm sorry, that I had wanted to make and I feel they're really important. One is that I really do appreciate the fact that ecology does pay a living wage to its employees. I know we've heard about the benefits that they offer their employees from other union people at previous meetings, I think a couple of years ago at one of our council meetings. And really do want to thank them. I think the delaying any kind of a consideration for a rate increase for a six-month period of time, you know, is a substantial amount of potential money that could have come their way. And again, I really do appreciate the fact that they were able to agree to do something like that. And the fact that I don't see any other council members' hands-ups, I would be delighted to make a motion if we're ready for that.
I believe we are.
I think we are too. Okay. I move to adopt a resolution accepting the detailed rate review and approving the maximum allowable rates.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I second that motion. Sorry, Mark.
All good.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Lauren, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Delauso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
He has to abstain.
I apologize. I remember he recused. Mayor's coming.
Yes, so please show that's a four vote with one abstention from Vice Mayor Moore. And thank you, Lauren, if you could please then let Vice Mayor Moore that he can rejoin the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Really appreciate you coming back. All right, with that, I see Vice Mayor Moore is back.
Yes, the one. I'm just kidding.
All right.
So we'll move on to item C, Commercial Cannabis Permit Applications Review. And for that, I will turn it over to JP Harries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, members of the council. My name is JP Harries, Senior Planner at the City of Katati. Tonight, we are looking at the commercial cannabis application reviews for, application reviews for commercial cannabis permits. These are business permits that are issued by the city council to qualified operators. Next slide, please, Lauren. We have five applications before the council tonight. Three of them you've already seen. The first, the top two that are listed in this list here, Clear Lake Growth Fund and Fume Growth Fund, too, are a result of being purchased. So Stax has purchased Clear Lake Growth Fund and Katati Distribution is purchasing Fume Growth Fund. And they can't just purchase or they can't just transfer the applica, or their existing permit without our approval first. And I'll talk a little bit more about these various applications as we go on. Eagle Eye was approved in 2018 by the city council to operate at 369 Blojet Street. They since in that time chose not to operate at 369 Blojet Street and instead are going, are choosing to, or requesting a permit to operate from 531 Mercantile Drive. Another, then we get on to the two new applications. One is Tetrisert. They are proposing to be a nursery. So they would grow small plants that would then be, they're clones and then they're sold to other cultivators or retail stores. And then the last one is Nutropic or NT Ventures LLC. And they are now proposing to operate at 369 Blojet Street. So 369 is a change, a proposed change in the operators. Next slide, please. So just by way of some background, in November 7, 2017, Katati voters passed Measure G. This is what this measure established a cannabis business tax for the city. Then following, in February 13, 2018, the council adopted ordinance 883, which did several things. First, it established parameters for personal cultivation on residential properties, which limits it to six plants indoors. It established the locations and regulations for commercial cannabis activity. And it established the maximum number of different commercial cannabis business within the city limits. And I'll touch on those numbers at the end of the presentation. So since adoption of the ordinance in 2018, the council has granted permits to 11 potential businesses. Six of them are currently operating or are making sufficient progress towards an operational business. Five of the permits that were issued have expired, either because they didn't move to establish the business or they chose to withdraw their permit or in one case, they simply just abandoned the permit without really communicating with us. So next slide. So the applications tonight, the first one, Fume Growth Fund, again, it was purchased by Katati Distribution. They're also another company that Katati Distribution is affiliated with, is Trimco. They are a distributor, excuse me, yeah, a distributor. And similar to what Fume Growth Fund was doing, they collect cannabis products and flour and then distribute to other manufacturers or retail stores. So they simply move cannabis goods from one place to another. Currently, they're operating out of 471 Aaron Street, out of Sweet C. And they intend to continue to operate out of 471 Aaron Street, Sweet C. I will say that they have actually not started operating yet because we haven't authorized the authorization to begin and we won't until the tenant improvements are completed in the building. They're currently under review and I believe we're waiting for a resumme on the, on the building permit. But from what Fume Growth Fund was doing to what Katati Distribution wants to do, there's really no change in their, in their proposed operations. The other one was Clear Lake Growth Fund, which is operating at Sweet B in the same building at 471 Aaron Street. Now, this is a non-store front retailer, so they do delivery only. They use Eaze as their platform, their internet platform to do that. They are currently operating and Stax is affiliated with Eaze and will continue the exact same operation that's existing today and will continue into the future. But it will just be owned by a different ownership group. Next slide, please. Eagle Eye, this, like I said, was originally permitted to operate at 369 Blojet Street. They propose to operate both cultivation and level-two manufacturing. Level-two manufacturing involves the use of volatile solvents. Those are things like propane and butane. It sort of requires a more rigorous review with the fire department, which we do. And also, they will use a license to distribute goods by picking them up and then also delivering their products to other retailers. There's no real proposed changes in their operations from when they were proposing to operate at 369 to 531, just a slightly different layout of the floor plan, but the operation remains similar. And it will also require a use permit approval to operate a level-two manufacturing facility. The last one is, excuse me, not the last one, but the next one is NT Ventures, or also known as Nutropic. They currently have a manufacturing facility in Santa Rosa. They propose to expand their facility here. They are in the business of manufacturing, so they use, they extract oils and use those in vape products and ointments and various other cannabis products. There is an existing use permit at 369 Blojet Street, which they can utilize, but they'll be looking for a type seven and a type 11 distributor license. Next slide, please. And then the final application is Tetrisert. They were proposing to operate at 445 Portal Street out of unit number eight. And they are requesting to operate a nursery. So these are plants that are not grown to harvest, harvestable state or the flower that you can use. Whether they are clones that are then sold to other cultivators that will grow them to their adulthood or they are sold, or they can be sold at retail places for a for customers to purchase plants to grow in their own home. So the applications themselves have been reviewed by all the departments within the city. as well as the Rancho Adobe Fire Protection District. The resolutions that are attached to the staff report include numerous conditions of approval from those reviews. Then also, this year, Chief of Police, Michael Parrish, and I have conducted onsite security reviews with every single one of the applicants, and even the ones that are just changing ownership. We met with them, went over onsite all their security plans, had them submit it in writing to us, and and so they've all had a very thorough review, and the chief can talk about that if you'd like to ask him some questions. And then, next slide, please. And so here's how it breaks down in the city. These are all, if, this would include the ones tonight if they are approved, but these would be all the cannabis operations with respect to the total licenses allowed. There's five cultivation licenses allowed in the city, seven manufacturing, or that can also be a laboratory or standalone distribution. We allow up to seven of those, and then two retail establishments. So if you approve the applications tonight, there'll be two cultivation permits remaining, two manufacturing and fuel permits.
Having some problems with your audio. Hang on, just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
That's okay. Yeah, so you were just cutting in and out, so I just wanted to make sure we caught everything from this slide.
I'm sorry about that. I used this phone specifically to avoid that problem. And I, with that, I think I'm done. I will say, because the agenda was looking like it was going to be rather full tonight, I asked the applicants not to prepare presentations, but I do see that they are all, we have representatives from all of the businesses here. And if you'd like to direct any questions or comments to them, they are available for that. And with that, I will close, and I'll make myself available for any questions that you might have. Oh, one more slide. We are recommending adoption of the resolutions, which would grant the cannabis business permits to the following operators. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's always, always challenges with these meetings, so. And I'm sorry that I interrupted on that last one. So with that, I'll bring it to the council, see if there are any questions for staff or maybe applicants. And Councilmember Landman, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First, a quick statement and then a question, if I might. In the interest of full disclosure, I wanted to mention, I was amused to find while going through the applications, I noted the owner of NT Ventures is a gentleman named Art Vollett. And I believe that is an acquaintance of mine from back in my high school days. I will mention that we have not been socially engaged since before 1972, so I don't think it calls for recusal. But in the interest of full disclosure, I wanted to mention that. So thank you. And a question that I did want to ask. First of all, to many of the applicants that obviously have worked with us before and paid attention, I appreciate you, the addition of having a a job preference for Cotati residents. That's something we generally ask for, and I'm happy to see that there. I noticed that in most of tonight's applicants, not all, I don't think. I think in one case, it was just for Sonoma County residents. What I'd like to ask staff is if we could just add a general condition that requires preference for Cotati residents in employment. And what I mean by that is if you have two applications that are roughly equivalent, and one is a Cotati resident and the other is not, that residents in Cotati would be deemed beneficial and give them a nod. So I'd ask staff if we could do that, and I would ask any of the applicants here tonight, if there's anything that I'm missing, if that's problematic for any reason, please let me know. If I don't hear anything, I'll assume that's workable for the applicants, because I don't want to add any burdens. But I do think the folks at Cotati have been very supportive of this particular industry in this community, so I'd like to see us be able to give something extra back to them if we could.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Delloso, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. JP, I have a procedural question, and that is the way the staff report was written out and the resolutions were put out. It appears that then, we, if we are going to move on each of the different businesses that have applied for permits, we would need a resolution for each of them. I just want to make sure that's correct.
JP, you're muted.
Thank you. That is correct, Mr. Delloso. And I prepared five separate resolutions for each of the applicants. They are on page 265 of your packet, 270 of your packet, 275, 283, and 292.
Excellent. It was just procedural, and I want to make sure I was going along the right terms. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. And I'm not seeing any more hands. Oh, I take it back. Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, JP, for that presentation. I did have a question. Eagle Eye is going to be in the business of cultivating as well as distributing? Is that correct?
JP, you're muted. Sorry, we have to keep muting you because otherwise we get an echo.
I'm sorry about that. That is correct. Both cultivation, distribution, as well as manufacturing.
Okay. So of the potential businesses, they are probably looking at being one of the larger employers in that particular industry, if I understood that correctly?
I would say that's a fair assessment, yes. And the manufacturing does tend to be a large employer, yes.
Okay. Do we have a representative from Eagle Eye here?
You do.
Okay, my question is, if you look on packet page 158 of tonight's agenda, and the first paragraph, there's a comment there that the company anticipates that it'll have fewer than 20 employees. However, the company will, prior to initiating recruitment and hiring of employees to work at the facility and to enter a labor peace agreement with the cannabis division of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. So my question is, what is a labor peace agreement? Being involved with the unions, various unions for over 20 years, I'm not familiar with that term.
Lori or Lori Kai can answer that question. Her hand was raised.
I was too.
Alyssa, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Hambricht, and I'm the principal at Fume Growth Fund Two and Clear Lake Growth Fund Two. And I just wanted to chime in. A labor peace agreement is required by the State of California for all licensed cannabis businesses. Once your company has 20 employees or more, you have to submit to the State of California proof that you have agreed with the union that is organizing your part of the supply chain with your willingness to be unionized. That's what the labor peace agreement is.
Okay. Good. So if you are at 18 employees, is that something that you would consider?
Oh, the, I'm not part of Eagle Eye. Our Clear Lake Growth Fund Two is our company that had more than 20 employees, and we absolutely entered into a labor peace agreement, and our employees voted to unionize with the UFCW.
Thank you, Alyssa.
No problem.
And we do have somebody from Eagle Eye here?
We have two representatives from Eagle Eye. There's Angelo Catania and Lori Kai. Lori had her, Angelo's hand is raised.
Hello, this is Angelo. Can you guys, can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay. So yeah, we will be following the guidelines of the UFCW representatives' advice on under 20 employees. However, we will be following the guidelines of UFCW to the T. And so basically, we want to make sure, and to chime in on the hiring of employees from Cotati, that's actually something that we would prefer. We like our employees to have an ease of transport and can, you know, commute to getting to work. And so that's actually a benefit for us. If there's two resumes that are equally strong for one position and one's in Cotati, that's who we're going to lean towards. And besides that, we will be taking advice from our UFCW representative for peace agreements under 20. Over 20, of course, we will, you know, follow the mandates there.
Thank you, Mr. Catano.
No problem.
Orlie, did you want to speak?
Lori Kai, you're unmuted if you wanted to share any further comments.
Thank you. I hope you can all hear me. I'm having a little technical difficulties, but to just expand on what Angelo just said.
Lori, are you also the 808 number?
Cannabis licensing has said a peace agreement is entering into or allowing employees to enter into an agreement with a union. Our current union for our other cannabis businesses is the UCFW-5.
Lori, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you also the 808 number?
I am.
Okay, that's why we're getting an echo. So one of them, one of them needs to be muted. So if you're talking to your computer, just mute your phone, and then we should be all good. Sorry to interrupt.
Got you.
Lauren, if you can please unmute the 808 number, because then we'll be able to hear what's going. There we go. Lauren, can you unmute the 808 number? I would do it, but I don't have the power. Lauren, can you unmute the 808 number, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Perfect. That's okay. No, it looks like it's unmuted, so Lori, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now? I'm so sorry.
No, that's perfect, and we're not getting the echo, so thank you very much. I'm sorry for the delay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think Angelo did address your question, as well as the previous commentator to it. The labor peace agreement is, according to BCC regulations, is that we allow our employees to organize. And currently, we use UCFW Local 5. So anytime you have 20 or more employees, that's where the rule comes into effect. Currently, at our other establishments, we do have unionized employees, and Angelo is correct in stating that our first preference is always a local talent that is in that community that we operate in.
Thank you very much for addressing that. I always think that that's important if that is an availability and if that's appropriate for that business. The, typically, you'll have a greater level of safety and health compliance in a union-run facility because they have those, typically, those contingencies within the memorandum of understanding. So thank you so much. That helps me to appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate the back and forth and getting the quick answers, so it's great. I'm not seeing any more hands going up for council members, so I will ask Lauren, if you could please check in with the attendees. And we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. For our attendees, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Skilman, that'll be the end of public comment.
Okay, great. So thank you very much, everybody, for the back and forth and presentations. And I'll go ahead to close public comment and bring it back to the council. And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I had no questions, but I would just like to make a quick comment. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the detail in each of the applications. I think this was pointed out. People kind of have gotten to what our expectations are. So I really appreciate the thoroughness and look forward to seeing where we go with this, but I do appreciate all the work that went in to each of these applications. Thank you.
Absolutely. And does anybody else in council have further comments or ready to go ahead for our emotion?
If we're ready for a motion, I'll take a stab at the first one. I appreciate having the pages laid out for us. That'd be very helpful. Thank you. I'd like to move a resolution of the city council, the city of Cotati, awarding a commercial cannabis permit to Clear Lake Growth Fund Two, Stacks LLC, for non-storefront retailer delivery activities under state license type nine, non-storefront retailer, at 471 Aaron Street, Suite B.
This is Vice Mayor Moore.
I think I cut Vice Mayor off, but this is Councilmember Delloso. I will go ahead and second that motion.
It's a good damn thing you're leaving.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Lauren, can you please take a roll call vote on the first motion?
Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, thank you. So please show that's a five vote. And we'll look for the next motion.
And so for my punishment, I will try to move the second resolution. And I move that a resolution of the city council of the city of Cotati awarding a commercial cannabis permit to Fume Growth Fund Two, Cotati slash Cotati Distribution LLC for cannabis distribution activities under state license type 11 distributor at 471 Aaron Street, Suite C.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lauren, do please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Okay, so please show that that's a five vote as well in favor and look for motion number three.
Come on, John, you're on a roll.
All right, then. All right then. I move resolution of the City Council of the City of Cotati awarding a commercial cannabis permit to Tetra Cert to allow a commercial cannabis nursery parentheses cultivation and distribution activities under state license type four nursery and type 11 distributor at 445 Portal Street, number eight.
I'll second that motion. This is Councilmember Harvey.
We have a motion and a second, Lauren, if you could please take a roll.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skelman.
Yes, that's also a five oh vote. And I appreciate that we're making the one council member with no depth perception read these, but if anybody else wants to make the next version.
I'll take a stab at that, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move a less, excuse me, move a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cotati awarding a commercial cannabis permit to Eagle Eye LLC to allow up to 22,000 square feet of commercial cannabis cultivation, including nursery, level two manufacturing and distribution distribution activities under state license types 3A medium indoor cultivation type four nursery, type seven, level two manufacturing and type 11 distributor at 531 Mercantile Drive.
Councilmember Delosso, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and Lauren, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skelman.
Yes, thank you. And I believe we're at last but not least.
All right, I will dive in again. Again, doing all this with just one eye, but it's the best we can do.
And you missed the opportunity to move on the Eagle Eye.
Very, very appropriate. Thank you. I missed out on that one. I move resolution of the City Council of the City of Cotati awarding a commercial cannabis permit to NT Ventures to allow level two manufacturing and distribution activities under state license type seven, level two manufacturing and type 11 distributor at 369 Blojet Street.
It's Councilmember Harvey. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Lauren, if you please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skelman.
Yes. So please show that is a five oh vote as well. And thank you very much for all of the representatives who attended here tonight so that we could ask any questions and we appreciate your input and good luck with all of the businesses. We hope that they move forward in a positive way and can help contribute to the community. And with that, we will move on to item D and I will turn this over to our City Manager, Damian Obed.
You, Mayor, members of the council. So we had an election, it turns out, in November, November 3rd, the general municipal election that we consolidated with the county. So basically contracted with the county to run our election for us. And as part of that process, the county does the canvas and then certifies the votes received and returns them to us, to the City Council to actually accept and declare the results of the election. So the items on the election were an extension of Measure G, known as Measure S, that passed with a little less than 75% approval. And for City Council, we had three seats open. The three highest vote getters were Council, current Councilmember Susan Harvey, Laura Sparks, and Ben Ford. And so in the packet attached, you'll see both the resolution declaring the results of the election. And also resolutions recognizing our two outgoing council members, Councilmember Delosso and Mayor Wendy Skelman. So it's a three, it's actually a three part action, although you'll notice in the recommendation, there's a little bit of misnumbering there. So the first is adopting a motion to receive the County Clerk's statement of votes cast. The second action is adopting the resolution declaring the results of the election. And then the third is the resolutions recognizing the outgoing council members. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so first I'll bring it back to council if there are any questions for staff. I'm not seeing any hands going flying up since it's fairly straightforward. So oh, I take it back, Vice Mayor Moore.
We didn't have to do any recounts, did we?
I'm not aware of any recounts. No.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will open it up to public comments. So Lauren, if you please check with the attendees if there's any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. Once again, for attendees, if you use your raise hand icon by using the icon on your desktop or device or dialing star nine. Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I would just like to congratulate you all with the new a new council with some very strong new members and congratulate Susan, Laura, and Ben for your win. And tell you all that I'm really looking forward to some interesting things happening in Cotati in the next year due to your efforts and just very excited to see you all here tonight.
Lauren and Barbara, go ahead.
Looks like she was unmuted and then muted again. So if you can unmute her again, thanks. It keeps flashing back and forth. Let's try one more time. Well, unfortunately, I can't. Okay. Yes, go ahead, Lauren.
Every time I unmuted it, anyway, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to express my thanks to the outgoing council members for their service to Mayor Skelman and Councilmember Delosso. I really appreciate what you have given to Cotati and that's the main thing I wanted to say and also welcoming the incoming new members of the council. I'm very excited. So thanks to everybody who serves. I really appreciate it.
George Berich.
Thank you, Lauren. Well, it's nice to hear from Adrian Lobby tonight, our convicted money launderer with the FPPC. So nice that she could chime in on this tonight. Now regarding these these commendations. I never got a commendation when I left office, even though a couple of people got up to congratulate me on the fine work that I did standing up to the socialist menace on the city council and John Moore out in the audience coming in drunk as often as he did. The fact is, is that the night that I left office before the meeting was over, there was a locksmith changing the locks in the council, city council office where I could not get my mail until the next day. So I would, am I correct in assuming there's a locksmith at the council office, making sure that the keys that John Delosso has and Wendy Skelman no longer work after tonight? Because if not, that would show some favoritism on the council to one particular. Yeah, it's real funny, isn't it, Mayor? Huh? You're trying to control my body language at the meetings? You know, should be ashamed of yourself. Control yourself, Mr. Berich, you know? What a farce. You know, what a complete farce this is. You know, you have a locksmith under Diane Thompson coming in to change locks where there was no illegality whatsoever, other than as a council member who failed to be blackmailed and blackballed to become a Democrat, you know, and there's no locksmith in there tonight, is there, staff and council members? No, I didn't think so. Disgusting. Thank you.
Richard Tang, go ahead.
Okay, now I'm there. I wanted to give my gratitude to the folks that have been serving on the city council for several years now and it's been quite a number of years that you folks have been doing an awful lot of good work for us. So I really appreciate that. And I'm also quite excited by the incoming council members. I also wanted to recommend that in the future, when we have debates or discussions for the candidates, if we could open that up to Zoom again, even if it's post COVID times and we don't need to. I really appreciated the inclusivity that created. I think there's an awful lot of people, not just because of timing and issues, but also accessibility. So please at least do that in parallel in the future. And so once again, I feel quite hopeful between Measure S and everything else that's been going on in Cotati. It's sure nice to have it feeling like things are going well on the ground here. So best of luck to all.
Mayor Skelman, that ends public comment.
Okay, great. So we'll close public comments and bring it back to council. If there are any further comments or if you want to make a motion. And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
There are no other comments. I would be happy to make a motion. First, adopt a motion to receive and file the Sonoma County Clerk's statement of votes cast. And two, to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020, determining the elected council members and certifying that Measure S was approved by majority vote of Cotati voters and three, recognizing the outgoing council members by resolution.
Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Was that to second or to make a comment?
I will second, but I'd also like to make a comment when we are, if it's appropriate, when we are done with the voting.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Landman, did you have a comment or you? Councilmember Landman.
Hey, this would work better if I unmuted.
There you go.
Everybody, thank you. Yeah, it wasn't clear to me from looking at the electronic version of the of our minutes here that this might be the time to just say a few words in recognition of the service you and Councilmember Delosso put in. So I wanted to see if this was the appropriate time perhaps to do that. And I'm assuming, Madam Mayor, you're not saying no. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume it is.
I see, I see City Manager Damian Obed wanted to unmute himself. So did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I've, it absolutely can be. I think the next item is gonna be the last item for this current council, just administering the oaths and then we'll be switching seats virtually. But I think now is as good a time as any, probably.
Okay, well, in that case, I would just like to thank you both. You know, I sit here with a lot of feelings looking back on a lot of years we've shared together. A lot of years of stability, of growth for the community, of good discussions mostly and some difficult ones, but ones where we all played fairly, listened to each other, and then voted our best conscience. And I think the result we see is because of that, we have a community that's moved forward. We see that certainly in the support from the community and supporting Measure S, I believe, and that reflects back on the patience, goodwill that both of you have brought to these meetings. I can't think of how many times I've been appreciative to those big things and little things you've done during parts of meetings. And I know that as much as I look forward to working with my new colleagues, I will say I will miss you both very much. So this is a heartfelt thank you to everything you brought for the people of Cotati, but also to me and all my other friends here on the council as a colleague. So thank you both. And you can watch, you can watch this on the internet and smile when we're having a rough meeting. You don't have to be part of it. So that'll be kind of great. Thank you, guys. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
Yes, I did those comments well said, Councilmember Landman. John and Wendy, it's really been such a pleasure working with you guys over these years. I know, John, you had like a second term. Kudos to you for coming back again. I enjoyed working with you guys. I enjoyed campaigning with you guys, the times we campaigned. And as Councilmember Landman said, you know, it's the things that we had to go through during good times and bad to get to resolutions to make things better for our community. And I wish you both well in what it is that you're going to do moving forward. And I guess if you ever get lonely, you can run again and come back. But good luck to both of you and I too will miss you and I hope that we'll see you both around town. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. I just want to say, coming on to the council and having John and Wendy on there has been a tremendous learning opportunity. I really appreciated the different perspectives that are brought to the council, the fact that we were able to work through situations with respect and civility and humor from time to time. You couldn't ask for a better group to work with. I will, I will be missing you guys on council. I will be looking forward to the new council members coming on and their perspective, looking at issues. And I know Wendy, you may not be retiring in the sense of retiring, but there was something that I wanted to share with both of you guys that I thought was appropriate. And I don't know if John would appreciate it as much being of Italian heritage, but it is a little Irish kind of retirement blessing. And that goes, may there always be work for your hands to do. May your purse always hold a coin or two. May the sun always shine on your window pane. May a rainbow be certain to follow each rain. May the hand of a friend always be near you. May God fill your heart with gladness to cheer you. And thank you so much for serving and making our jobs that much easier by participating and being so effective. And I'll leave it at that. There's some other comments I might make later on. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, it's definitely mixed emotions tonight. It's been an amazing eight years serving with all of you and I really appreciate all that I've learned and you've really enriched my life over the last eight years and I will definitely be sticking around and showing up as a member of public for future meetings, just to check in and see how things are going. So thank you all so much for your time. And I see Councilmember Delosso, you've got your hand up as well. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wrote down some thoughts I had that I'd like to share with everybody. I can get just somewhere under three minutes to do this. And I apologize in advance for, I may have some choppy reading here with only one eye functions. So, but I will do my best. And let me first congratulate our two newest members of the Cotati City Council, Laura Sparks and Ben Ford. Very happy to see you two on, very excited for both of you. I also want to express my thanks to Brittany Murphy for running a very fair and honest campaign. And it pleases me to see such bright and articulate people running for office. And that is in no offense to the people who are in office right now. You two are also bright and articulate. Let me just make that point clear. After 14 years on the city council, prior to that, five years on the Environmental Advisory Commission, this is my last meeting as a city official. I was first appointed to the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Commission, in 1990 and have been involved in some way, shape, or form with the City of Cotati for these past 30 years. and have been involved in some way, shape, or form with the city Katati for these past 30 years. I was first elected to the city council in 1994 and have been able to work with some incredible staff and fellow council members. I'd like to thank the dedicated staff that we have on hand and those who worked tirelessly to make this a better place, who came before them. I'm gonna call out several people. Al Martinoni of Public Works Crew, Craig Scott, along with Public Works in Engineering, Angela Quarter in Administrative Services, Chief Parish, and the dedicated officers and dispatchers of our police department, Noah House in Community Development, Ashley Wilson in Recreation, and in the City Managers Office, Lauren Burgess, who has been an incredible asset to me over many issues, and Damian Obed, who always had an open door for me to ask questions and run ideas by him. I also thank those who volunteered their time and expertise on the Design Review Committee and our Planning Commission. You collectively have made our job on the city council easier by first vetting projects and giving us and the public your comments and concerns. I also thank the support of the public for the critical thinking you give on various topics. And these comments, those comments that would make me pause and rethink my opinion on a topic. Those differing opinions can oftentimes help us see things in a very different light. The various council members who I have served with and have learned so much from, including Sandy Ellis, Richard Cullen, Harold Berkmeier, Bill Miller, Pia Jensen, Janet Orchard, Pat Gelardi, Sue Harvey, John Moore, Wendy Skilman, and Mark Landman. I've learned so much from all of you, even when we don't start on the same page, but almost always end up on the same page for the greater good of the city. Finally, without the strong and loving family support I have had while doing this job and having a full-time job on top of this one, I could not have accomplished what I have done over these many years. I thank them. I will be around to continue to help this city, my city, to be successful. So you can't hesitate to call on me if I can be of any assistance. Thank you all very much.
You're so much better organized than I am, John. I'm very impressed. So I wanted to echo also thank you to all of the city staff over the last eight years that have really helped and supported us and kept us on track. And welcome to the two new members. There's a wealth of knowledge with the three remaining folks. And anytime you need to reach out to me or John or anybody, please feel free to do so. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve. This is a great community, and you'll really enjoy the folks that you meet and get to interact with. So we have a motion on the floor. We'll ask if we can get a second.
I'd be happy to second that, Mayor Skilman.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. And Lauren, can you please take a roll call vote? Councilmember Delloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman. Yes, thank you. And just so you know, I actually do have a gavel that I can virtually pass on to the next focus in line. So just wanted to let you know, I was prepared, even if it's only virtual. So we'll show that's a 5-0 vote for that resolution to pass. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to item 11, City Council Reorganization. The Oath of Office. So I believe, am I turning it back over to Damian?
Briefly, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is the, this is the transition point tonight. And Lauren, I assume you'll be doing these one by one, the Oaths of Office.
I believe I can go ahead and do it as a group.
That's correct.
Thank you. If I can go ahead and have Susan Harvey and Ben Ford and Laura Sparks on video. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the oath to you. I will have you, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Ben Ford.
Susan Harvey.
Hi, Laura Sparks.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Q.
Excellent. See, if we were in person, we'd all be applauding, and I didn't have the reaction, so I had to do it actually. So yay, congratulations, everyone. Welcome. And with that, we will move on to item B, which is reorganization of city council, which then means I get to stop talking.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, or former mayor now. Congratulations. So since the mayor has stepped down from the council, Vice Mayor Moore will be the presiding officer for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. And now we will look to reorganize for the upcoming term. And I would be, I would, do we want to look for a nomination for the mayor or vice mayor first? Or does that matter?
I'm not aware, Mr. Presiding Officer, I'm not aware of a policy internally, but typically the mayor is nominated first.
Okay, and I would open that up to my fellow council members if we have a nomination.
Uh, Mayor Moore, Acting Mayor Moore, I would like to nominate Vice Mayor John Moore to be mayor for this coming year.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I would second that motion.
Thank you. I would accept that nomination. And if we could, if there are any further comments from the other council members? Ms. Harvey, you're muted.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Were there any other comments from the other council members?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Ford or Councilmember Sparks, you're okay at the moment?
Absolutely. I, I thank you for being willing to accept that nomination.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Lauren, if you could do a roll call on there?
Um, Vice Mayor Moore, should we open that for public comment?
Oh, certainly. And I'm a little rusty on that one.
I know.
Do we have any attendees who would like to make any comments on that motion?
Marjorie Crump Shears, please go ahead.
Bravo. Thank you.
Lori Alderman, go ahead.
I am very disappointed that you have made Mr. Moore the mayor after we went through 2016 of his citizens' comments. It was a volatile re-year because of his running the meetings. And he does not deserve, after his actions this year of publicly shaming on the city's Facebook, three active citizens that oppose it. I am very deeply upset, and you will not be having a lot of public comment as you have because of your actions and allowing Mr. Moore to run the meetings again. We won't, you'll have less civil public engagement, which is, seems to be your aim. Thank you. Bye.
George Beric, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren. I'd like to concur with Lori Alderman. I think it's shameful the way that John Moore has treated citizens, especially Lori Alderman, and claiming that he supports Black Lives Matters and other radical Marxist violent groups. And yeah, he's a little rusty on, on opening up for public comment because that's kind of an anti-Republican thing to do. It's more of a Soviet style to kind of move out and ignore public comment. But I digress. And you know, when Mr. Moore talks about a learning opportunity, you know, I think I have a learning opportunity for Mr. Moore tonight. When a bartender takes your car keys away, don't wrestle her to get your car keys back. She's doing you and your family a favor. You have no right to be the mayor of this town. Thank you.
Richard Tang, go ahead.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for anybody who would take the hot seat as mayor in this town. And I appreciate those who serve both as mayor and vice mayor. So know that you have a lot of support from a good number of your constituency.
Vice Mayor Moore, back to you.
Yeah, it does not appear there's any more public comment. Thank you for those comments. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, I'm not going to quantify those comments. I'm not going to validate some of those comments. I look forward to a good year coming up ahead. And right now, I would like to see if we have a, what do we have now, the City Managers Report?
Oh, yeah, finishing the vote on this, and then we gotta go to the vice mayor.
Got it.
Yeah, there was a motion pending, and then you have the vice mayor.
Thank you. So Lauren, if you would call for the roll call?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes. Thank you. So now we would go on to the nomination on the vice mayor and the vote on that as well?
Uh, Mayor Moore, I would like to nominate Councilmember Landman for vice mayor.
Thank you. I would second that nomination. And then I'd like to
Sorry, are you ready for a roll call vote?
I think we might need to open this up to public comment as well. Looking forward to that with bated breath, of course.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren. It certainly does take some courage in our council to step out in a leadership position and a lot of patience to listen through some of the rhetoric, which has only gotten more weird as years go by. So I want to thank all of you for, for sitting up there, doing it week after week. And, and I, I wish you the very best. That's it.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Bravo. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. Okay, we have, thank you, Lauren, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we do a roll call unless we have any further comments from the council? Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Lauren. And now that we have that all completed, I think we are down to the City Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and congratulations, everybody. I will just start out with just a brief update on the state of COVID, which I think everybody already probably knows. But the big news, of course, is a governor's stay-at-home order, which goes into effect in any region of the state that drops below 15% ICU bed availability. The Bay Area region is currently just above 24%, which Sonoma County is part of the Bay Area region. So we are still under the restrictions of the purple color tier, so we're still in the colored tiered system. As you, I'm sure, heard, five of the counties voluntarily went into a stay-at-home order, but they, they weren't required to by the states that showed. And there's been lots of discussion subsequent to the governor's order about what actually constitutes an available ICU bed. So I know that's still being sorted out, and the state is looking to issue guidance there to try to make sure that everybody is reporting bed availability the same way. Typically, when you have natural disasters, they're typically contained within regions. So you don't often have disasters that scale the entire state. And then I think what happened in this case, with this, at least with respect to this particular metric, is that different regions, you know, looked at their neighbors' notes and realized that they're counting beds differently. And so they're all trying to sort that out right now. But more on that very soon, I'm sure. So for Public Works, you know, for tents, we, we put out four tents this, this last Thursday. And this was a combined effort with all the departments contributing to make it happen. And in the council, of course, approval to allow us to move forward on the initiative. And Public Works marked out and prepped the sites with platforms, built platforms for at least one of the big tents there in front of Redwood Cafe. Installed traffic barricades where it was needed and customized wine barrels as tent tie-downs. On install day, Public Works delivered the tents to the site and helped with the installation. And the tents have been well received by downtown businesses. And, and we're already shifting our focus to the next round of tents that we plan to install. And I have to say, I think it was Monday morning when they had that big windstorm. I woke up in the middle of the night, kind of freaked out because it was so windy that I was, I was worried that we'd find the tents in a ball on the creek. But fortunately, everything worked as designed, and it all stayed where it was supposed to be. And then also, we're working on a community center re-roof, so the Civic Center, the preliminary evaluation has been completed. And the good news is the structure can support, the existing structure can support solar panels. That's been part of the kind of parallel goal of that re-roof project. I mean, the main goal, of course, is that the roof is in really bad shape and just needs to get replaced. But while we were in the process of doing that, we didn't want to just throw a new roof on it. We also wanted to evaluate it for its structural integrity to hold solar panels. Because that's, that's where, that's where the direction has been to, to get panels on that roof once the roof is replaced. And so we expect to have this project ready to bid February or March of 2021. So you'll all be seeing more on this with install, hopefully in the springtime. For water supply, it has been a below-normal November so far this month, but it's still too early to determine if it's going to be a dry year. We won't know for sure until later in the winter. And actually, in terms of water supply and dam operations, it's the springtime. That's the most critical time in terms of water storage for the summer. So the water contractors in Sonoma County Water The water contractors and Sonoma County Water Water Agency, now they call themselves Sonoma Water, are putting together a timeline. For rolling out conservation messaging if the dry conditions continue. So the last time the situation occurred was back in 2014, and there was a voluntary. 20% reduction. Beginning late in January of that year. So too early to tell yet this year, but as these things go, they're already starting to plan contingencies in case that is necessary. And then yesterday at the water tack meeting, Sonoma Water presented the fiscal. 1920 budget versus actual report and the main takeaways were that the actual water sales were about 4% higher than budgeted. So there's. So that translates into a little bit more revenue for Sonoma Water. Expenses were down about 13 million. So most of the lower expenses were due to the slow, slow start in contracting capital projects. And normally with higher than budgeted revenue and lower than budgeted expenses, that's probably good news moving into the next fiscal year's budget in terms of. Rates that Sonoma Water, who's our water wholesaler. Ends up instituting for the contractors, each of the cities to pay for the wholesale water. Community Development has been working on a draft cottage housing ordinance, and this was presented to the Planning Commission last night. And and the public, of course, for the first time, the commission was generally supportive, and we had several members in the public call in and participate. So that was good news. The final draft of the ordinance is expected to be presented to the commission for formal review. Last night was a more of a workshop format. So there'll be a formal review by the Planning Commission and recommendation before them. It's looking like in February, and then the final draft will become council. Shortly after that, I mean, tentatively, we're basically planning April for that to come forward to the council. And this is really part of a. A multi-pronged effort to get ahead of the state legislation so that we have the pieces in place to be able to respond to development. And hopefully get the kind of development that we want to see in Cattati that fits within the community and that functions well. There's been a lot of state legislation around buy right housing. In other words, housing that can be essentially approved of the building permit and no discretionary community review. So. This is this is one. We also did the accessory dwelling unit earlier this year ordinance. We updated that. And there's also design guidelines that we're working on too that'll be coming forward next next year. So. As part of that, we have an ongoing community housing survey. It's coming to an end tomorrow, December 9th, and the community development department has to date received 105 responses to that survey. And participants that provided their email are being entered into win one of three gift card baskets. Each one worth $100, all from local Cattati businesses. And city staff will randomly draw three winners tomorrow at 4:00 PM on Instagram and Facebook Live. So tune in. To find out who the winners are. And if you haven't taken the survey, I highly encourage you to take that survey. And the gateway giveaway, I'm sorry, closes tonight at 11:59 PM. Kind of reminds me of my daughter's Google Classroom. The assignments are always due at 11:59. So. If you want to do a housing survey, do it before midnight tonight. It can be accessed from the community development housing page on the website. And if you did miss this one, don't worry because the community development department is also moving in, moving forward on a multifamily housing design survey. This is opening this week. And so this is a visual preferences survey. So a lot of different architectural forms and. And types and trying to get feedback on what people would like to see. Again, this leads into the. There's going to be a lot of housing discussions next year. This can help inform that discussion as we develop design guidelines and those types of things so that we can. Hopefully guide development, particularly buy right development. So we get the right kind of form and function that we want. Taking the survey will provide another three chances to be entered into our next giveaway, which also includes three $100 local business gift card baskets. And the surveys and giveaways are funded by SB2 and LEAP grants, which is some state money that was made available to help with the transition and all the housing legislation that that was passed. And they're being used to gather this community input for both housing efforts underway and to provide baseline data needed for the upcoming housing element update. So that's also. Yet another piece that's going to follow because we have to within the arena cycle, update our housing element to to conform with that. Which is a component of the general plan. And so this survey can also be accessed from the community development housing page. On the in the police side of the house, we're using OTS or Office of Traffic Safety grant funds that we received. To have additional officers out on patrol on December 10th from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM, looking for drivers suspected of driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So again, just part of a longer continual effort to keep them off, keep them off the road. And if certainly if you get. If you get caught, it's a substantial fine and it's it's not a good thing. So we we publicize this and try to make sure everyone knows that we're doing this. So that just as a reminder, we don't want to catch you. We just don't want you on the road at all. And that's coming up on the 10th. Just this last week, on the on Friday, the 4th, the police department hosted cocoa with a cop. Normally, that's an in-person event, of course, but officers and dispatchers, in this case. Provided families with a basket of cocoa and cookie mixes that families could pick up and. And and bring home and make it home with their with their families. And this was done through a socially distanced drive-through. So COVID safe, so that we could. Hand them gift baskets and they can take it home and enjoy it with their family. And then finally, recreation. So this coming Saturday, we're hosting our breakfast with Santa to go event from 8:30 AM to 12:00. PM, so noon, at the Ray Miller Community Center. And normally in past years, we have a sit down event with Santa. This year, obviously, we're not doing that. So. We're providing each registered participant with to go a to go meal of pancakes, scrambled eggs, sausage, milk, and hot cocoa or coffee. Each child will also get a goodie bag to take home with all the supplies needed to make two holiday crafts and ornaments as well as other surprises. So Santa will also be there to give each family a car side greeting six feet away. And there will, there's still some spaces available, but pre-registrations required. So sign up online to ensure that you have a space if you're interested in this. On Friday, December 18th, we'll be hosting our December drive-in movie, which is Elf with Will Ferrell. And we have a few spaces left, but do expect this to sell out like past events. So again, you can register for that on the recreation page on our website. And then during the two weeks of winter break, when school or distance learning is on hold, we will be offering our in-person Camp Cattati winter break camps. We will have two weeks, two weeks of care for children in small group pod settings. Campers will get to spend the day making crafts, playing games, playing outside. And hanging out with the friends in their pod in a fun and safe environment. And of course, following all the county and state guidelines for day camps. And then this past Saturday, the Cattati Chamber Commerce hosted the Downtown Cattati Shop and Stroll event. It was a great success. Our downtown businesses and other local vendors were able to provide goods and services to those looking to provide. Gifts, local gifts for this holiday season. And the weather was great for outdoor dining, and it was a great one stop shop for holiday gift buying. So that was nice to see. And then from now through December 20th, if also you might have noticed on our Facebook page, we're hosting a virtual gingerbread house making contest. So those of you that are. That like to bake gingerbread and are super competitive, now's your opportunity to show the world what kind of gingerbread house you can make. And. You can email us your best gingerbread house creation and we'll put it, put the contestants on Facebook on December 21st. For our vote, for our followers to vote on who has the best gingerbread house. So winners will receive gift certificates to local businesses for that. And you want to email Ashley Wilson, and that's awilson@catatity.org, if you have an outstanding gingerbread house that you want to email in. And then finally, we're also still accepting non-perishable food donations at the front of City Hall that will go to the Redwood Empire Food Bank to distribute to those in need. And so far, we've collected two barrels of food and are hoping to get two more before the end of the holiday season. And then also this week, again, at the front of City Hall, we also started a stocking stuffer supply drive to collect supplies for those living. In the Redwood Gospel Mission Shelters. So you can find a list of all the items we're collecting on our social media pages. If you want information about any of these events or programs, you can find them on the city website at cattatity.org. For recreation events that I mentioned, you can always contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222 or awilson@catatity.org. And of course, always on our social media pages. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I appreciate that. I don't know if there are any questions from the council for Damian.
I've got one, Mayor Moore.
Go ahead, Ben.
A few meetings ago, the council approved spending somebody on a racial bias polling project. And I'm wondering if you can update us on the status of that.
So the survey is well underway. It started in November and I haven't heard that it's been finalized. But I expect the schedule was that it would be done by mid-December or so. So it should be anytime now. It should be finishing up.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Obed? Okay. Now we'll move on to the city council member reports. Councilmember Talasa, would you like to initiate that?
I could do that. Really, just one, well, a couple of means quickly to report out on. The Ag and Open Space Monthly Meeting was a light agenda, so we postponed it to January meeting. And. The new interim general manager appointed by the Board of Supervisors was Carol Hart. Who formerly ran the County Parks Department and has been involved with. You know, parks at the state and national level for many, many years. So. She is now the new interim, and we're anticipating that could be four to six months before the board. Who's doing a national search will fill that position permanently. And last Friday, I had the Health Action Council meeting. And that'll be one of the, both of these will eventually be follow-ups for the current council to then reappoint somebody. Those meetings have turned to monthly. They used to be quarterly, but they've turned to a monthly meeting and. And I can certainly fill in anybody who's interested on what goes on there and. Because all the elected, there's usually representatives from each of the cities and from the county as well. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Thank you, John. Former Mayor Skuman.
I do not have anything to report out. And then I'll just let you know you'll need to make a motion to continue past 10:00 PM. But good job, Mayor Moore.
Thank you, former Mayor Skuman. Do we have a motion amongst the council to continue beyond 10?
So moved.
And second it.
Ms. Burgess, if you would kindly take a roll call on that.
Thank you, Mayor Moore.
Hang on a moment, Ms. Burgess, if you if you would. Just for Councilmember Sparks and Councilmember Ford. We do have an ordinance on the books and just to remind you, in case you didn't know, that any item that we bring forward after 10 o'clock, we. Have to have a motion on that to go beyond 10 o'clock. So that's what this is all about. Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you. And. And now we can continue with the city council member reports. If anyone has any they'd like to report out on. Councilmember or Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just real quickly, I'll report out one item of interest from our last Sonoma Clean Power Meeting on December 3rd. One item that was discussed as our staff is beginning, along with staff from other larger CCAs throughout California. Exploring the concept for creating a JPA of JPAs. With the idea of joint procurement of energy resources, specifically very, very large clean power renewable. Projects that are best suited that sort of project that are too big for any of us to handle on our own. A lot of detail to it, and it's still being investigated. I'll be reporting back out on that, but. The hopeful thing about that is it will, number one, help with deal some of the shortages that we saw when the KISO grid. Was a little overloaded this summer, will help start to answer some of those questions and also put us positioned to move forward in some very strong GHD reducing. Projects that we might not be able to do singly. So I'll report Mac Moore back on that out to the council in the future as it develops. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
My meetings are later this week and next week, so you caught me a little early.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And. Regarding any of the committees that I am on, the liaison to the Chamber Commerce, I think. Mr. Obed gave us an update on that and what's happening with the businesses and the tents there. And I don't have anything else to report out in that regard. Oh, the the only other thing is on the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance, which is now CERA. The the big push for them these days is the health and safety regarding COVID. And funneling out information to all the various members of the organizations and how to comply with those and. Liability issues and things like that. So they've been very busy in that regard. And that's all I have to report on that. So with that in mind, we can go to the public comment on non-action agenda items. And Ms. Burgess, if you'll let me know if you see any public attendees interested in speaking.
George Barrage, go ahead.
Thank you, Lauren. I'd like to speak to Mrs. Harvey. On a future agenda item, I would ask you to consider that I did tell you and the council about Rado. And their. Their dishonesty. And I was ignored. I was ignored by you and the council about that. Now, tonight, you discuss your disappointments with Rado. So maybe next. Next year, you can come back and 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 give me accommodation for telling it straight when you when your council could not handle the truth. And then Mr. Landman, y'all might want you to consider as an agenda item that you shouldn't be supporting anything. Unless you have heard all the discussion. That's what you did tonight. You said, I'm going to be supporting this or supporting that. To make up your mind without hearing your colleagues and the staff to the full conclusions of an item is irresponsible. And a Brown Act violation. At any time, more information on an issue can come come up before a vote. And you should not be committing yourself verbally. To any position that you are going to take because once you stay that you're going to support a particular position, it's very, very hard. To turn around and admit that you you spoke too soon and change your mind and flip flop. Now, you were all given copies of the Brown Act when you were, when you were appointed to the city council, as you were Mr. Mr. Landman. And I would advise you to go back and read it. You're also given a copy of the League of California Cities. And in one of the chapters there, it speaks specifically to not do what you did tonight. Okay, and I know Mr. Mr. Moore will not validate this either, but it was Chief Parish who charged. Mr. Moore with driving under the influence, arrested by Eric Bilic, sworn officer of Cattati. And he had to go before a judge on that and he and Moore tried to evade arrest. As he tried to run back to his house and lock Mr. Officer Bilic out of his house. Luckily, Eric got his foot in that door and arrested Mr. Moore. So, you know. So, you know, you don't have to validate all these things, Mr. Moore, because they're going to come up. Over and over again, you can try to tell the lie as often as you can, but it's you're not going to fool anybody. Okay? You're you're you have no right to be in that seat that you're in. You know, you have a habitual drinking problem and driving problem. There are bartenders in this town that will attest to it time and time again. Good night.
Thank you so much. Adrian?
Thank you. I would just like to give you a little information about homeless policy and funding in Sonoma County. There's been quite a brouhaha as one policy group was completely disbanded. Another policy group was. Elected Monday night. And one of the issues that's come up is the role of small cities in. This policy group, which was formerly called the Leadership Council. It's now called the Continuum of Care Board. Don Schwartz, who is a staff person at Roderick Park and. Steven Sotomayor, who's a staff person in Healdsburg, were elected to this new group. And they both specifically said that they felt like small cities, meaning not Santa Rosa, not Petaluma. Should have more representation on this board, which decides policy and funding. Make some of those major decisions. There's been a lot of unhappiness with the old way it was done in mostly in terms of inaction. And the new board is pledging to do this quicker. But I thought that Cattati might want to talk to Dawn as a, you know, Roderick Park staff person. And kind of follow this a little bit, talk about our own issues with homelessness and what we would like to see done. And. Thank you. Let's go home and go to bed.
Thank you, Ms. Lobby. I did fail to mention that I was part of that ad hoc committee that put those names up for nomination for that continuum of care board. And hopefully that will help to solidify that and have greater specific direction. So thank you very much for that. Ms. Burgess?
Laurie Alderman, go ahead.
I want to point out that Mr. Moore cannot go through one agenda item without. Degrading public comment. His first agenda item of he he's he put out, he said he wouldn't recognize or something. A couple comments. This is. How long is this going to go on? You know, anybody, how much do we have to do to be heard, to have all of our voices heard? Not just ones that sing in kumbaya with all you guys. You or not have actions taken against you for. For speaking your mind. You guys haven't had much public comment because everybody knows in this town what has happened. You need to acknowledge. Of what the council members have done to especially to me this year. You need to acknowledge this. And no. And just you're not, this city is not going to survive unless you start listening and start letting people. Communicate any kind of criticism without taking actions against them. You're not going to, how many, how much public comment have you had since? From since all this happened in September? Very little. You've had some some. Meetings have had no public comment. You need to be doing actions to support people coming. And to give comment, not just trying to destroy them. With your actions. I'm so tired of it. And unless things improve, you're not going to get anybody to, you're going to have these same things. You're going to have. These meetings with no public comment and you'll have complete control of financial. And political control of the city, which seems to be what you want. So I'm just tired of it and I really hope you think over the next few weeks. What you're doing. Thank you. Bye.
Is there any more public comment, Ms. Burgess?
That ends the public comment.
Thank you very much. And is there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Okay. With that in mind, I would again like to congratulate the new members of the city council. Laura Sparks and Ben Ford. Strap in and hang on. It's going to be an interesting ride. I certainly appreciate all the efforts put in by Wendy and John. It's been fantastic. I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. I believe this is the last meeting before next year. And if there's nothing else, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at ten fifteen. Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Have a good holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
Bye bye.
Bye.